The following is a production of Cary TV, the town of Cary's government access channel.
Call to order, the November 21st meeting of the Cary Town Council. And at this time, I would like to recognize our Mayor Pro Tem Ms. Adcock to provide the ceremonial opening. Ms. Adcock?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I usually try to provide a health tip in my ceremonial opening, and tonight I want to talk about No Shave November. Since 2003, the No Shave November movement has steadily traveled across the globe. What started between two mustache-loving mates in Australia has turned into a worldwide phenomenon and a brilliant way to encourage men's health. Each year, the movement has grown with campaigns launching in several countries from the organization Movember. And while the movement began with one global charity, alliances and partnerships have bolstered the movement into a mainstream pop culture. This year, for Movember, men have chosen to emphasize the detection, early detection and treatment of colorectal cancer. Because colorectal cancer is often asymptomatic, routine screening is essential to detect it at an early stage. It is the second-leading cause of death from cancer in Europe and the United States, and the third most commonly diagnosed cancer in men and women in the U.S. Men sporting a November mustache, also called a "mo," are not just experimenting with facial hair. They're making a statement and supporting the movement to raise awareness of men's health. Many of them choose to grow "mo" to raise funds for charities that support men's health this year, colorectal cancer screening. And I couldn't be more thankful for the men who've chosen to support, fight colorectal cancer this November. So, men, even though I myself cannot grow a "mo," I just wanted to say thank you to all of you who have. And please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
(APPLAUSE). I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's cool. Good job. Although it might be... Thank you, Ms. Adcock. We look to hear "mo" from you later.
Yeah.
We're now at item, Agenda Item A3, which is actually the adoption of our agenda, and I would suggest adding a manager's operational update as Agenda Item C4. Is there a motion to adopt the amended agenda?
So moved.
There's a motion?
Second.
And a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That takes us to the consent agenda portion of tonight's meeting, which is Item B. For the benefit of people watching our meeting on TV, we're going to take a moment to read the consent agenda items. Please keep in mind that one vote approves all of these items. On the consent agenda, we have minutes. Setting public hearings for annexations. Approving a tax report. Continuing the public hearing for 13 SP 010 to the December 12th council meeting. Adopting a resolution authorizing the lease of the Jones House. Approving the farrow property annexation and rezoning. Approving the LDO amendment pertaining to telecommunications towers. Approving the state employees credit union rezoning. And approving the Anzow property rezoning. Mr. Smith and then Mr. France will briefly summarize the committee consent agenda items. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. We had 10 items on consent. The first one was the fiscal year 14 street improvements project. Next was the recognition of developer funding for revisions to the green light, green level interceptor at the Bellwood Manor development. Next was the utility agreement with North Carolina DOT related to the Morrisville Parkway. We had a traffic calming project for Sturdivant Drive. We had amendments to the traffic schedule 14 regarding speed limits. We had amendments to the traffic schedule, Section 8 prohibited parking, which elaborated on the times and traffic schedule at, I'm actually not quite sure what they're, what areas they're talking about, but it elaborated the times for those locations. Next, we had the North Carolina Arts Council grant for Creative Capital Workshop. We had a bid award for rear-loading refuge truck cabin chassis. We had municipal records retention and deposition schedules amendment. And then finally, we had on consent, the organization restructuring of the town of Cary staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Ms. France?
Well, I wish I could say our meeting was as exciting as theirs, but we had one item that went through on consent. That was the fiscal year 2014 Community Development Block Grant Funds. And later up for discussion, we'll be discussing mobile food units, otherwise known as food trucks.
Okay, very good. Would any council member like an item pulled from the consent agenda for discussion? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. This takes us to Item C, which is recognitions, reports and presentation, presentations. We do have special guests in the audience. There are Boy Scouts working on their Citizen in the Community merit badges. We have two troops, Troop 200 from the First United Methodist Church and Troop 244 from Peace Presbyterian. If you at this time would stand so that we could recognize you for attending. Thanks for being here, and we hope this isn't your last visit. This takes us to Agenda Item C1, which is the recognition of the 2013 Hometown Spirit Award recipient. And at this time, I would invite our 2012 Award co-receipients, Betsy Dasal and Joy Pike, to join me at the podium.
So briefly, right before this council meeting, we had a reception over at the Herb Young Center for six nominees who are gonna, one is, well, maybe two, I don't know, you guys have the envelope, I don't know who's gonna with it, that's gonna take the place of our 2012 Award winners. And they have not only served the town well during this year, but in previous years, and I'm sure will in the upcoming years. And we thank you for all you do for the town each and every day, and please give them a round of applause. You know, we have a holiday coming up next week, and it's Thanksgiving, and this is a perfect time, I believe, to, leading into the Thanksgiving holiday, to honor and thank those in our community who have unselfishly given of themselves for the benefit of others. And there are six we're going to recognize tonight as nominees, and I'm gonna call their names and ask them to stand and remain standing while I call their names. BJ Bajoric. And if you weren't at the reception, you missed some very interesting things said about these wonderful people. So I'd invite you to go to our website and check 'em out. These are pretty amazing people. We have a star-studded group, I think one of our council members said a while ago, and we certainly do. And each, each of these are perfect examples of what our Hometown Spirit Award is all about, bringing the best out of what Cary is all about and really loving the town in which they live, work and play in. So we thank you, and I think it's, it's now time to get ready to name the award, so I'd ask you, go ahead and be seated. And our 2012 winners are going to, I think, announce the winners at this time.
What?
But before you do, (LAUGH) before you do, come on, say a little bit of something.
As, as a co-recipient, I can only thank Joy for being one of the best co-receipients that there ever was, ever will be. We're fellow baseball moms together. We've been in towns together, far and wide, and Cary is the best. And we commend all of the people that were recognized today and all of the people who sent in the nominations, because they're the ones that realize without these volunteers, Cary would not be the place that it is. So thank you very much for nominating them. Each one deserves your special recognition, and we will announce the winner. Ready?
She's got the envelope.
I have the envelope.
This really is a secret.
No, we can do it together. Can't let her see it. No, I'm just kidding. Okay. And the winner is Jerry Miller.
Mayor, thank you so much.
The podium is yours.
The podium is mine. I am so honored and thrilled, and I cannot believe it, but I would accept it. I love it, and I try to do all I can for Cary. And I've been doing it for 58 years, and so it's just continued till I fall over. I love the town of Cary. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you. Thank you, girl.
And again, thanks to all of you, and God bless you, and have a great Thanksgiving. You don't have to leave. We have one more run coming up.
We'd like the happy half to stay.
We're now at our second item under recognitions, reports and presentations. It's Item C2. It's a Small Town Business Saturday proclamation, and Mr. France will introduce the site. Mr. France?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to invite Elizabeth and George Sullivan to please join me at the podium. Elizabeth and George Sullivan own Elizabeth Home and Garden Shop in downtown Cary. And as a lot of you know, downtown Cary is on the move. Things are happening. The town is obviously doing a lot and investing a lot, but the town cannot do everything by itself, and nor should we. We rely on entrepreneurs and private individuals and businesses to also step up and invest in our downtown, and these two have, and they've done fabulously. I believe you are celebrating your one-year anniversary.
That's right.
So it's an honor to have them here with us this evening. They're a true example of what can be a success and what's happening in downtown Cary. It's my honor to present the proclamation recognizing November 30th, 2013, as Small Business Saturday in the town of Cary. And I'm gonna read it from the official one.
Oh, right.
All right. "Whereas small businesses form the backbone of our local economy, generating jobs and improving the quality of life for our citizens; and whereas the town of Cary supports the efforts of local small businesses and recognizes the critical role they play in our community; whereas Small Business Saturday is a nationwide campaign to cultivate business for small merchants on the Saturday after Thanksgiving; whereas Small Business Saturday will stimulate economic growth for all merchants in our community by following the tradition of Black Friday, one of the busiest shopping days of the year; whereas the town of Cary values its local businesses and celebrates the diversity of the goods and services they provide. Now therefore, I, Don France, on behalf of Harold Weinberg Jr., Mayor of the town of Cary, and on behalf of the entire Cary Town Council, do hereby proclaim November 30th, 2013, as Small Business Saturday in the town of Cary, and encourage Cary residents to recognize and support small businesses within our community by shopping at these establishments on the Saturday following Thanksgiving as a way to boost our local economy and strengthen our small business community. Proclaim this 21st day of November, 2013."
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, since we opened our shop a year ago, it's been an exciting experience for us, and I'm so thrilled to be a part of this. And I just thank you, the town of Cary, for recognizing our need for a day, how do I wanna say it?
For businesses.
Yes, just a day given to help small businesses downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for believing in our downtown and believing in your business and putting it in our downtown and being a part of our revitalization efforts. And of course, congratulations on your first-year anniversary, and we expect to see many, many, many more.
I just wanted to say a small thing, and that's that the town of Cary, working with us with the facade grant, was the most amazing work of teamwork I've ever seen. It was, I mean, I didn't know what I was doing, trust me. And they hand-held Elizabeth and I straight through the entire thing, and they made it possible for the front of our building to be exciting. And we thank the town of Cary for all your help and giving us that grant as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is the presentation of the 2013 Marvin Collins Outstanding Planning Award. I invite either Ben Hitchings or Roger Walden, or both, if they can make it, to the podium, so that they can present the award to Billy Lee of our staff.
That's right. Thanks so much, Mayor Weinberg, members of the Cary Town Council. My name is Ben Hitchings. I'm the president of the North Carolina Chapter of the American Planning Association. I'm also the planning director for your neighbor, the town of Morrisville, so it's great to be here in Western Wake County with you. We are here to recognize some outstanding work by, by your community, by your team, by your staff. And so we are, every year, we have an awards program, and we have a new award this year. And to tell us a little bit more about that will be Roger Walden, our awards chair. You all know Roger from his work with, with your community. So here's Roger to tell you a little bit about this Higgins Greenway project.
Thank you very much. It's great to see all of you again tonight. I am, as Ben mentioned, Roger Walden, and I'm chairing the awards program for the North Carolina Chapter of the American Planning Association. And there are a couple of reasons why the Planning Association sponsors an awards program. One is to identify, recognize, celebrate outstanding examples of work in our communities. And the second, equally important, is to hold up work that is excellent for other communities to see and learn from. At our awards banquet this year, I was delighted to be able to talk about this program, this Greenway Trail, as not only an outstanding example of partnership, of multidisciplinary action, but also, this is a model, and I was able to say to other communities, "Look at this. This is, the town of Cary has always set the bar high. You, you do great things all the time, but this one was really one that we wanted to show to other communities across the state of North Carolina." What we were saying at the awards banquet was we were talking about how this melded planning, engineering and parks and recreation disciplines altogether, the, and that the work with the state, you leveraged resources, you improved water quality, you improved access to this very important trail for your citizens, and we just think it was an outstanding project, and we were very happy to select it for an outstanding planning award for the state. So again, congratulations to you, and thank you for all your excellent work.
And so now, what we would like to do is present this framed certificate to Billy Lee, your Stormwater Services Manager. And again, congratulations on some outstanding work. Thanks for bringing it home to Western Wake.
Mayor, Councilman, good evening. On behalf of the Stormwater Services Group, Engineering, Parks, Rec and Cultural Resources, Planning Department and Public Works and Utility, I'd like to thank Ben and Roger for this award. I would also like to thank the council, the mayor and the town for allowing us to do this worthwhile project. It's truly a, an amenity to our, our community. Thank you.
Ms. Lee, thank you, and please thank the rest of the staff that you work with for the Stream Restoration and Greenway Project. It really means a lot to the town. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
We're now at Item 4, which is the town manager, Mr. Shiver's operational update. This item was added to the agenda at the beginning of the meeting, and I believe Mr. Shiver has someone to introduce.
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mayor. And I would like to introduce to our audience and those watching at home Carl Knapp, who is the new budget director for the town of Cary. And I think Carl has been on the job for, is it nine days? That's about right. So pretty new to us. We're putting him right on the spot here tonight with the presentation. And I would like to preface that with just a few comments. As council knows, staff typically begins either in October or November, bringing some updates to our revenue picture. And this year, with Carl on board, we've made a few changes with that. One of the reasons for that is our past presentations tended to show a little more of one piece of what the total budget picture is. So this year, or beginning this year, at this presentation, we're gonna focus a little bit more on the revenue side, just to give you a picture of where our revenues are standing and how they're coming in at this point. And I'll be asking Carl to do that. After he's finished, Mayor, I do have a few other items that I would like to bring council and our citizens up to date on, and with that, I'll ask Carl to make his presentation.
Good evening, council. As Mr. Shiver pointed out, this is our initial look at the revenue picture for this year. It's early in the year. Much of the variability in revenues from year to year takes place later in the year, so this is probably a set of figures that are going to change over time, but we wanted to give you an initial update. Looking broadly at the general fund budget in terms of budgeted revenue versus what we are estimating, we're looking at about 1.2 billion at this point above budget, which would represent just under 1% above the budgeted level. We'll look now at the revenue sources that are involved in that estimate. On this chart, the horizontal bars represent the dollar amount that each source is above the budgeted amount, and the percentage next to it represents how much that additional revenue represents of the original budget. In permits and fees, we're projecting a 22% above budget level. This is due largely to the general improvement in the housing construction market with permits running ahead of where they were last year. Utility franchise taxes, this is an area where there's a lot of variability. This estimate of being 4.2% above the budgeted amount is due largely to where we wound up at the end of last year. This is an area where there's significant variability, especially in natural gas taxes, depending upon how warm or cold the winter is. So as we get a better sense for that moving into the winter months, this amount may change depending upon where we wind up. In sales tax, last year's end-of-year numbers actually wound up ahead of what we have budgeted for this year, so we're expecting additional revenue in there. Revenue continues to grow at a much lower pace than it has in past years, but we forecast continued growth in this area. Miscellaneous revenue, about a third of this amount is due to DOT reimbursements for traffic signals. The agreement that was negotiated with DOT would bring in about $40,000 more than was budgeted. Investment earnings are slightly ahead of the rates of return that were forecast in the budget. At this point, we're leaving property taxes alone at the budgeted estimate, because we really won't know enough about that until after January to have a good fix on it. The parks revenue here is, is a little bit deceptive, is a negative. Generally, parks revenue is up above budget, but the soccer venue had money budgeted for the NCAA championship as revenue from ticket sales. Those ticket sales are now being handled by Campbell University, so both the revenue and the expense of handling the ticket sales will be removed from the town. So while that represents a, an under-budget in revenue, there will also be a commensurate reduction in expenses in the soccer venue. And then in solid waste and recycling, this is, we implemented the, the higher fee last year. This is just a little bit below at this point where that estimate is, but it may be that as permits are indicating, if we have additional housing coming online, we may see this recover somewhat before the end of the year. I'd be happy to take any questions if you have them.
Any questions? Very good. Thank you, council.
Mr. Mayor, as I indicated, there are a few other things I would like to point out to the council and our viewers and citizens, one of which is the Western Wake Regional Water Reclamation Facility, which we actually have not been giving too many updates to the council on that project. Number one, it's been going so smoothly, it's in some ways almost off our radar screen, but because it is such a significant facility for us, it's really important that I think I give you a short update on that. We had also talked about potentially taking council, or those council members that are interested, on a tour of the facility. That has not happened, and so we'll see if we can make that happen before it actually opens. There are some things that have happened that I'll report on that might make it a little more appropriate to visit about this time, and be a little more meaningful for you to, to see the facility. But I think it's important to note that we're entering the final stages of construction. Most of the structures are complete, and the process equipment has, for the most part, been installed. Plans are being made for startup and commissioning activities, and the flow in the plant for early testing not to be fully operational for our needs may begin as early as the spring of 2014, so just a few, few months from now. The new administration building is, building is almost complete, and the staff has been hired to date. Will occupy their new offices within the next couple of weeks to oversee the startup and certification of the new facility. And finally, not only is this project on schedule, but as of right now, and we believe it will stay this way, is that this is under budget, by, at this point, a fairly significant amount. So that will be important to us as we wrap up this project. I would also like to note that the town of Cary's Parks Recreation and Cultural Resources Department renewed its status in October as the only agency in Wake County, and only one of 119 throughout the nation, to have received national accreditation from the Commission for Accreditation of Park. Commission for Accreditation of Park and Recreation Agencies. We consider this a priority. There are very few agencies that have achieved this across the nation, and it's important recognition for the quality operation that we have here at the town of Cary. So hats off to Doug McRaney and his staff for the great work that they do. Would also like to report, I had mentioned this earlier, but would like to report that the Wake County Commissioners recently approved the county staff work on a local, inter-local agreement to partner with Cary on our 800 megahertz radio main system. The county will share annual maintenance costs and capital upgrade costs in the future with the town, and each agency will continue to be responsible for its own channel sites. This partnership will greatly enhance our mutual aid and interoperability with Raleigh, Wake County, and surrounding jurisdictions. This is often one of those programs and projects that is kind of off everyone's radar screen, and we don't hear a great deal about it, but it is very, very important for our total emergency operation system, and we are close to bringing that to a conclusion. I'd also like to mention that while the media has covered this very well, in fact, I think in Wednesday's news editions, Cary News Edition, National Fire Prevention Week was concluded in October, and the fire department made over 7,800 education contacts with citizens during the month. I would also encourage everyone, as we approach the holidays, that citizens may want to refer to our website for safety tips associated with frying turkeys and Christmas trees. And this is the article and the information that appeared. And it's very important because it still remains a big hazard, and life and property is at risk in these endeavors, so we encourage everyone to look at those safety tips. Would also like to report that the design work for Fire Station 2A, which is located on Chatham Street, part of our Cary Bond projects, is progressing very well, and we anticipate bidding for construction to occur in the spring of 2014. Finally, I would like to mention once again, this has received a fair amount of media coverage, but I think it's important to reiterate and to really tip our hat to the Cary Police Department. As we've reported before, that based on data recently published in the FBI's Annual Uniform Crime Report, and reviewed by the town's Crime Analyst Unit, Cary has the lowest total crime rate in America among municipalities with populations of 100,000 to 500,000 in the 2012 calendar year. Additionally, I am very pleased to report that crime has decreased by another 7% through October as compared to the same time period in 2012. Would also note that we had a little rash of burglaries, and the arrest of two suspects earlier this month has cleared a number of cases off our charts, and seems to have put a stop to a significant series of burglaries that targeted both commercial and residential properties. So I think, Mayor, we're very proud, and again, I'd reiterate my hats off to Chief Bazemore and the Cary Police Department for the great work they do in keeping us the safest community in our size category in America. And that concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Shiver. We certainly are proud of our police department and all they do. Thank you. We now move to item D, which is Public Speaks Out. The next two agenda items, Public Speaks Out, item D, and Regular Public Hearings, item E, have included instructions for speaking at these forums on the printed agenda. If you'd like to speak, I would ask that you take a seat in the rows to my right that are shown as reserved, and follow the instructions on the agenda. Public Speaks Out speakers will have up to three minutes for their comments, and speakers may speak on any topic as long as it's not a public hearing. The public hearings will actually give you more time, so it's to your benefit. We have public hearings listed on the PowerPoint slide, and there are seven of them this evening, and we would thank you for holding your public hearing comments until we reach the public hearings. I'll enforce the three-minute time limit to be fair to all of our speakers. There's a timer located on the podium, which is highlighted now. When the green light turns yellow, that means you have 30 seconds remaining, and when the yellow light expires, you'll have a flashing red light, and at that time, I'll interrupt you and ask you to immediately conclude your comments. And I would thank all of our speakers in advance to adhere into our guidelines. And I also thank everyone in the audience for respecting this public meeting, and please do not applaud or make remarks from your seat or anything else that might distract from us trying to conduct this meeting and understand and hear what our speakers are trying to say. Having said that, I will now open the Public Speaks Out for anyone who would like to speak on any issue that is not a public hearing tonight, and I would invite the first speaker forward at this time.
My name is Alan Garillick. I'm a member of the Board of Heritage Pines, and we've had a problem in the area which was brought to your attention a month ago. That was the restriping of the double-yellow lines on Carpenter Upchurch Road. Jennifer Robinson had checked it out, and they came in within about a week, and they marked the road with white dots to show where the lines are going. And as of today, nothing has happened on that road. To this day, the kids are passing trucks, passing cars, throwing garbage out the windows, and the road has become a little bit more of a hazard because of it. And the officers couldn't enforce it if they saw it anyway because the lines are not there. I texted Jennifer, she was supposed to get back to me from the Town Manager.
Hi.
I would just like to find out what was happening with the restriping of those traffic lines.
Okay. Thank you, sir. And if you leave your contact information, they'll be glad to get in touch with you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else for Public Speaks Out before we move to public hearings? I see no one. I'll close Public Speaks Out, and we'll move to public hearings. The same rules that I announced a few moments ago apply to public hearings with one exception. Instead of three minutes to make your comments, you now have five minutes to make your comments. Our first item is item E1. It's the Public Hearing 13REZO2. We conducted a public hearing at our last meeting and continued it to this meeting, and Ms. Grant and our staff will present this request, and we're going to hear from the applicant. Then we're going to open the public hearing for anyone who did not speak at the first public hearing, and the council will not take action tonight, where instead, we're going to refer this to an Advisory Board of Citizens called the Planning and Zoning Board for their recommendation. So at this time, I'll recognize Ms. Grant.
Thank you. Good evening. I'll just give you a brief recap of the case that was presented to you a month ago. This is for 21.13 acres located at 2832 Carpenter Upchurch Road. The subject property is located within a mixed-use overlay district. It does have a current zoning designation on it of general commercial, conditional use, and residential multifamily conditional use. The applicant is proposing to make modifications to a previously approved Activity Center Concept Plan, which showed the configuration that you see here for big-box commercial tenant and a series of smaller commercial tenants and some residential multifamily. There were two different layouts proposed that showed different building placement on the site. The applicant is proposing an amendment to that plan, therefore, they're seeking MXD zoning, or mixed-used district zoning, and with that comes the requirement for a detailed preliminary development plan, showing the configuration of the buildings on the property, buffers, access points, et cetera. To summarize the plan, they are proposing 285 multifamily residential dwelling units and 10,500 square feet maximum of retail or restaurant use. Since this was presented to you a month ago, the applicant has submitted an additional condition that would restrict or prohibit the use of any fast-food restaurants with drive-through windows. This is the color illustrative provided by the applicant that shows the road network, building placement. These are the residential buildings in the light yellow, and in the tan color is the commercial buildings. It's part of the same property. There's an existing commercial parcel, Lot Number Four, and no change is proposed to that property. At the last public hearing, there were a number of citizens who spoke with concerns about traffic, road alignment, school impacts, the proposed use, and the density. There was also concern about the road alignment and questions about what the applicant was proposing in terms of addressing traffic mitigations. There are a number of traffic mitigations detailed in your staff report. The applicant has also proposed conditions that they would construct an off-site southbound left-turn lane at NC-55 and Morrisville Parkway with appropriate tapers, and to provide construction access points to the site as recommended by the traffic study. At this time, I'd like to ask the applicant to come forward and speak to the changes since this was presented to you last, and following the public hearing, I'll be available for your questions.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. My name is Glenda Top with Glenda S. Top and Associates, and I am here tonight on behalf of the applicant, the property owners, Joel and Dale Carpenter. Since it's a continued public hearing, all I am going to address is what's happened since the last public hearing. We met with the Board of Directors for the Heritage Pines Homeowners Association, and at that meeting, we went over what is currently approved on the site. We then talked about what is proposed, and after we had a discussion, the Board agreed to give their support, provided we considered offering a zoning condition that prohibited restaurants with drive-throughs. As they pointed out, they've been having quite a bit of issues with the students from the high school, and felt that this use would be a detriment to the area, and particularly Heritage Pines, given the proximity of Heritage Pines to the high school, and of course, being adjacent property owners to the proposed development. I believe each of you received the letter, you know, stating their support. So again, we did submit that condition, and other than that, nothing has changed, but we did want you to know that we did reach out and meet with the Heritage Pines community. And I'm here to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing and would invite the first speaker who did not speak at the last public hearing to come forward. And one more thing I would ask, to help with our time, not to repeat comments, so if you could please be a little bit unique in your comments, we very much appreciate that.
My name is Diana Roberto, and I'm a Lake Ridge resident. Good evening, and thank you in advance for your time and attention. We come before you tonight as a group of nearby residents exercising our obligation as concerned residents to be involved with development and direction of our local community. We moved here simply because we believe that Cary is the best town in this region of North Carolina. We are not alone in this belief. Cary has consistently made many prominent magazine top-10 lists for places to live for a variety of very good reasons. As a result, we have seen and accepted tremendous growth in the area, and the nature has changed. Unfortunately, at some point, it will begin to turn people away for the very reasons that we moved here, and this latest request may be that very tipping point. What we ask is very simple, that the town consider very carefully if this is the right thing to do. Will a high-density apartment and commercial community benefit the area as a whole? What impact will this have on traffic, schools, safety, and that wonderful quality of life that Cary has provided us all? We have always been active in and supportive of the community, and we fully appreciate the schools, parks, in and around our neighborhood. Finally, as an aside, we know that the town has encountered issues with the rezoning process, and we'd like to say that we feel the legal notification process is not always reaching enough of the impacted communities. I thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. I'm Mark Wainwright, and my wife and I are concerned about 13REZO2. Behind me are the residents of Preston Village, Lake Ridge Townhomes, and Heritage Pines, and Carpenter Village and other neighbors, who are concerned about the apartment being proposed on Morrisville Parkway and across the street from Carpenter Village. Would they raise stand-up, please? Thank you. I'm waiting for the handouts to get out. Some of this information and the handouts came out of a meeting about the Morrisville extension, so it's all new to us, too. These are from Town of Cary's own engineering department and the rezoning staff. Page number one, which is the top one, numbered in the bottom, they're numbered in the bottom-right-hand corner, shows the quarter traffic volumes with reference to the Morrisville Parkway 1.83-mile extension over 540, connecting both the existing portions of Morrisville Parkway. The two right-handed boxes show the 210 traffic volumes, I'm not sure why, versus forecasted 235 traffic volumes for the NC-55 at Morrisville Parkway intersection. The top box is southbound, the bottom box is northbound. Only the Turnpike traffic has heavier traffic in 2035. Interesting enough, the real information is on the page two, where there are red dots. The red dots on the right-hand side are the NC-55 Morrisville Parkway intersection, and they are red. And they are red for 2015, which is the box on the left, the first box on page two, even, and that intersection has failed, rated ERF. If no Morrisville extension is built, or even if it is built for two lanes, it's still red or failed. On page three, the NC-55 and Morrisville Parkway intersection is still red, although there are other red intersections with the dots around there, and it's still failed, even F or E or F if no Morrisville extension is made, there's built, or even if a four-lane extension is built. On page three, the other end of Morrisville Parkway is some information came from the rezoning staff, you may have seen that, is highlighted, and the intersection has gotten from worse, gone from worse in 2013 to 2017. It won't get any better if it's improved or built, whatever. So those two intersections are concerned for us. They will stay failed, no matter what's planned here. The NC-55 and Morrisville Parkway figures do not include an estimate for Parkside Town Commons, the big-box shopping center just two miles north of this intersection, where a Target store and hotel and 300 apartments, and 500,000 commercial space is under construction, nor the Anniston Town Center, large shopping center that is approved across the street for 590 apartments, 150-room hotel, and 250,000 feet of commercial retail space. Those are not included in those figures as far as I can find out. The intersection at Morrisville Parkway and Carpenter Upchurch Road, as previously mentioned by Devon Grant in the last meeting, is not good design and caused a problematic U-turn to be made by traffic trying to get to NC-55. Also, we are concerned that the applicant is trying to, is requesting to reduce the parking on his property by 23% versus what is required. One of the reasons I moved, and my wife moved to Cary, is that it is a lovely suburban town with beautiful homes and open neighborhoods. Getting out of our plan at Lake Ridge has become more difficult every day. We have only one road in and out of our development, and at times, it's a long wait till we can exit safely. With the building and constantly increasing traffic, I'm afraid we were considered urban, and we will lose the town that Cary is known. Thank you for hearing me this evening. Thank you for hearing me this evening.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Margaret Struble, and I live in Preston Village. We moved to Preston, I can't believe it's been 17 years. That makes me almost a native, I think, that's what they tell me. But we moved here because of the amenities, because of the open space, because of the lots, because it's had that small-town feeling. It's where I wanted to raise my family, my children have all gone to the Cary schools, we've been very, very happy here. But I have serious concerns about this development that they're talking about. I'm here to talk about congruency and, what am I here to talk about? I'm sorry, I lost my spot. Density and congruency. And my feeling is that, you know, this is in the middle of a very suburban area. Not only that, but it's in the middle of an area where there's much walking going on, and we have, the Town of Cary hasn't put in place so many great facilities that encourage that walking. We've got a library, two elementary schools, a high school, a park that's going to be built soon, and the tennis center, and they all encourage the neighborhood families to walk and to bike throughout that area constantly. There are walking trails, there's the park, there's the lake at Carpenter Village. These are all things that the Town of Cary has put into place to encourage our residents to get out, to walk around, to be out there in this beautiful place that we live. To put something like this right smack in the middle of an area that's totally residential, it just seems like, you know, not the smartest thing to do. We've got 285 apartments. What that's going to do to schools, the next person obviously is going to talk about schools, but it just seems like, with everything we have going on now, there are all these other apartment complexes being built in the area, do we really need more apartments? I don't think so. We've got 200, excuse me, 390 apartments that are being built over on Davis Drive and High House. We don't even know how that's going to affect the traffic and how that's going to affect the area at this point, and I feel like at least we need to open that up, have the residents go in there, see how that affects traffic, and see how it affects the whole area as a whole. I'm one of those people that, you know, development is inevitable, and when I first moved here, there was not a lot around Preston Village, and I looked at each new shopping center or development that opened with excitement, like, this is great, what's going to open up now? Are we going to get a Starbucks? Are we going to get a Target? What are we going to get? So development is inevitable, and we all agree on that. But it's also, we have to be responsible, and that's a choice. And I think that's what we're talking about here. No one doubts that we need to develop this land, but is this the most responsible use of it? I mean, I see it as a neighborhood gathering place. There are so many more things that we could do with this property, have restaurants where people can go and walk to, where they can sit out and have coffee, where the kids can bike to, but 285 apartments, the amount of traffic that that's going to bring there is not going to encourage these families and seniors and kids to be walking and biking when there are 285 apartments. Most of them are going to have at least two cars, so we're talking about a lot of traffic in an area where people want to walk and bike and be in a suburban neighborhood. So I just think that we may be missing an opportunity to build something really special in the middle of this area where there are so many families and so many people, Heritage Pines, Lake Ridge, we have so many retirees that have chosen to move to Cary as the place that they want to spend their retirement. There are so many things we're doing to bring them there, to put 285 apartments right dead-center in the middle of all these facilities just feels counterpodo. I can't even talk. You know what I mean? But anyway, that's my feeling, is it just does not feel like the best use of the property, and I think there are a lot better things that we can do for it that will benefit the community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Town Council, I'll be very brief on this. Firstly, we have met with the-
Could you give us your name again?
I'm sorry, Alan Garillick from Heritage Pines. We have met with the Carpenters, as he, as Glenda had stated. We have come to an agreement of certain things, and since we are the closest community to this construction site, they are trying their best to help us out, and we've agreed to back them on this plan, as opposed to other options that are available. The two things that I was going to bring up to this, not related directly but indirectly, and one has already been spoken about, and that's the 540 interchange. The other one is something that I have only heard as rumors, and as you know, you can't really trust rumors, but I have been, I have heard that there is future construction at the railroad crossing at Morrisville Parkway and right off 55. And I don't know if it's true or not, so I'm basically going to try and find out tonight, if possible, is there anything going to be done as far as an underpass or an overpass with the railroad crossing to eliminate a crossing gate? And if so, what will happen to the on-and-off from Morrisville Parkway to Carpenter Upchurch and vice versa, in either direction? I thank you.
Thank you, and be sure to contact us if you don't hear from anyone to get the answers to your question.
Then we'll follow up.
Okay.
My name is Vicki Olson-Miller, and I've lived here in Cary for 18 years. The past seven years, I've lived in Preston Village. It seems that everybody who's spoken here about this rezoning issue, like me, has moved from someplace else in this country, being drawn by the area's beauty and opportunity. I'm speaking here tonight because I've listened to others present information in opposition to this request for the rezoning, and I've come away with a different conclusion. We've just heard about the, the second before speaker talked about the problems with the congestion and that the streets don't support the current traffic. Well, putting in a residential community is going to lessen that versus putting in what currently this property is zoned for. It is zoned for a shopping center, or a heavy commercial and shopping. There'll be a lot more traffic if we go that route. I've heard an objection that adding more housing will increase traffic, and therefore bad. When we moved here in 1995, the population of Cary was about 70,000. Today, that number is over 145,000. It was clear to us in 1995 that this area was growing and seeking to grow. The state, county, town, and RTP were actively seeking to attract businesses and create jobs. The growth mode hasn't changed, as evidenced by Cary's pride in attracting MetLife's Technology Center to Weston with its 1,200 jobs and an average pay topping $100,000. Well, added jobs equals added housing, needs equals cars, equals traffic. Plain and simple. I've heard an objection that the proposal is for affordable housing, and that the type of residence that the type of housing would attract are more prone to crime and are problematic and somewhat undesirable. Well, affordable apartments is defined by the town as the creation of housing opportunities for individuals and families earning up to 60% of the area's median income. So with an area median income of about 93,000, that translates out to a monthly rent of about $2,300. Only in Cary would that number be considered affordable. I have a 20-year-old daughter who makes $10 an hour working at the mall. She cannot afford $2,300 a month, so this is not affordable housing. I've heard an objection that the addition of these apartments will put a strain on the schools. With rents pegged at about 1,200 to 1,500 for one bedrooms, the likely renters will hardly be families with school-age children who demographically prefer single-family and townhomes, which they can afford in the area for the cost of renting. It's my understanding that the target market for these apartments are empty nesters and young professionals, some of the same demographics as Lake Ridge at Preston Village and Heritage Point to be made, the owners of this property currently have the right to develop it as commercial property. This is not about what do we want to make it into. This is not about, let's make it single-family homes with one acre, this is not about, let's make it a park. This is about owners that currently have the right to develop it one way. They've come to the table asking to develop it into more of a residential property. As someone who lives in the neighborhood, in the general vicinity, who travels around there, when I look at it, I try and ask myself, what's going to be better for my overall environment and my property value? And is that going to be a commercial development in this area, or is that going to be an upscale residential? And it's clear to me, I'd rather opt for the upscale residential. I don't have the option to tell them to build a park, I don't have the option to tell them to build 5,000-square-foot homes on two acres. So I would encourage the council to approve this rezoning request. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is John Bubin. I think I know most of you. The good news is, I'm not here to talk about pickleball tonight. Now, you can beg me, but I won't do it. In fact, I understand the mayor had the opportunity to get initiated to the fine sport at the Volunteers' picnic. Hope you enjoyed it. What I'm here to do is to address a couple points, one of which Margaret made in her comments, relative to density and proximity. Now, by proximity, I'm talking about apartments being located close to where the people who want to live in those apartments would like to have, namely dining, shopping, services like haircuts and beauty parlors, et cetera. So I decided to do a little bit of research on the Town of Cary apartments, and luckily, I was able to find almost instantly a Town of Cary map. The first one that you look at is the Town of Cary map with all of its existing apartments, at least at the time this map was current. It's an eye-test chart, and rightly so, it carries a huge area, over 55 square miles. And on those little red dot, or not dots, but rectangles or whatever, are the apartments that exist in Cary. There's 60 of them, and if you can read the names of the 60, you're a better reader than I am. But what I want to focus on is the general area. If you see the circle in the, a little bit over halfway up, that's the proposed rezoning property. And so what I did is I took a, that rectangle represents what I call our part of town, okay? It's the northern, western part of Cary. It represents about 27 square miles, it's roughly six by four-and-a-half miles. A little bit of that is not ours, it's Morrisville because of the way Morrisville jumps in there. But, so what I want to do then is go to what I found out when I went to focus on that section. The second page, you'll see that what I've got there is that section, roughly 27 square miles. Within that section are 10 existing apartments. You can see them on the list down below. There's 10 of them, and the numbers that you see, the map numbers, are where you could find them on the map if you were to look above. And then also on that map number up above, you see the number of living units in each one of the apartments. Now, what, while I was doing this, and you can see that the 10 apartments and their respective units have roughly 2,800 living spaces in, just in the 10 apartments. And you can see up in the middle-left-hand side there, I did a little math that said, okay, I've got 2,790 units, 27 square miles, that's roughly 103 apartments per square mile. Now, I'm not a city planner, so I don't know if 103 units per square mile is good, bad, or indifferent, but what I want to do then is focus on the ones that are under construction, the Bristol and the Bradford. They're going to add another 630 units to the total inventory, and then the Carpenter property rezoning proposal, I don't know why, but I have 287, but I guess the official number is 285. So we can go from 2,700 units or 2,800 units to over 3,700 units of apartment spaces almost overnight, if you will. And so what that does to our density takes us from 103 per square mile to 137 per square mile. That's about a 30% increase in a relatively small area. So I'm, again, I don't know whether it's good or bad, I'm just bringing that up for your edification. Secondly, while I was doing this, I kind of started looking at where these, where these things are located, where these apartment complexes are located. Are they close to shopping? Are they close to the malls? Or are they not so close? So you can see, I actually did a little bit of a grading here. If you see in the middle there, I go from As down to Ds. The As are the ones that are literally right on the property, or you can walk across the street and go to a shopping center, go to a restaurant, et cetera. The Bs are still walking distance, roughly no more than a quarter mile, but you can get there by walking, very pleasant walk in the evening. The C minuses, now you're getting into the Cs and Ds, those are the ones where you have no choice but to drive. The two C minuses are over, over a mile, roughly a mile away. The D, Bexley at Panther Creek, is two miles, so I gave that a D. Now, if you look at the under-construction apartments, you've got Bristol, which is an A+, because it's literally on the property of Park West Village. Bradford is across the street from-
Unfortunately, I got to stop you. Your time has expired.
Okay, and the Carpenter property gets a D because it's two miles away. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Town Council. My name is Hank Say, and I believe we've met, I've met most of you before. I definitely appreciate your time tonight. I am going to try and be very brief. I had the good fortune to speak to Mr. Joel Carpenter on Monday night. He went out of his way to give me a call and discuss the development that he is proposing. We started off the conversation, he wanted to know how long I've been in Cary, and so I think that's a pretty relevant point. I'd like to state that I've lived in Preston Village since the year 2000. I've lived in West Cary since 1996. When I moved to Preston Village, Davis Drive was two lanes, Morrisville Parkway was a dead-end road, the only convenience or gas station was Jack's on the corner of Davis and High House. Upchurch Meadows and Lewis Stevens were dirt roads. Greenhope High School, Greenhope Elementary, the tennis center, the library, and others did not exist. I've approved of all of this development, and I believe it's beneficial to the community. So obviously, I am in favor of growth, I am in favor of development. I also know the land we're talking about tonight will be developed, there's no question of that. My opposition is to developing that as an apartment complex. However, I have a little different position. I really have an imagination for that land. I really see that as an opportunity for a true neighborhood activity center, featuring things like a boutique grocery store, fine dining, casual dining, a coffee shop, an upscale beauty salon, a doctor's office, a dentist's office, and other things that benefit the community and the neighbors of the area. An area that neighbors can walk to, feel safe to walk around, bike around, have a nice meal, whether it's inside, outside, make their life more convenient, less stressful, and honor the history and developing vibrancy of the neighborhood. Would this be easy to develop, easy to attract establishments and clientele to? Maybe not. I'm not a commercial developer, I can't answer those questions tonight. Our area has, however, repeatedly shown that we can do anything. If the same group that is here tonight speaking against the current plan could work in harmony with Mr. Carpenter and his team, imagine what we could do. If we have to engage the state in order to remove those medians and make the property more developable, developable, for the community, then I suggest we do that, and I suggest we ask the citizens to support the council, support Mr. Carpenter's team, and be aggressive to better our neighborhood and our community. With an engaged, enthusiastic, and committed community working together with Mr. Carpenter, I believe that this development would benefit the community, satisfy the owner's needs- I believe that this development would benefit the community, satisfy the owner's needs, and it would be another shining example of what Carey has come to stand for. In summary, I can imagine a neighborhood activity center, pride of the community, something that achieves many of the owner's objectives, and demonstrates we are a community with strong values and community togetherness. I imagine a development that meets and enhances the community's needs and lives. I would love to see this called Carpenter Corner, and I would love to see this neighborhood activity center move forward. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Town Council members. My name is Fran Dusterhoff, and I live at 214 Muirbrook Place, which is part of the Heritage Pines community. I realize the Board of Directors of the Heritage Pines community has chosen to support this rezoning. However, many Heritage Pines residents do not agree with that. I am here to request that the council deny the rezoning request for several reasons. The high-density development of this property is not in keeping with the congruency of the neighborhood, and will exacerbate existing concerns and create multiple new problems, one of which is parking. At public discussions, the developer has maintained that the current required number of parking spaces are excessive, and that he will request an exemption to that requirement. As there is no available public transportation, and employment opportunities within walking distance are limited to Carpenter Elementary School and the library, almost all residents of this community would require a car to reach work. There is no safe on-street parking. Carpenter Upchurch is a small country road. Morrisville Parkway is a thoroughfare, which, as you have heard, is expected to grow in the future. And Lewis Stevens has a narrow, curving section where it abuts the property. Thus, it is vital that the developer provide sufficient parking for both residents and their guests. This proposal does not do so. Access and egress are another concern. The proposal has access from Lewis Stevens. As previously stated, this section of Lewis Stevens is both narrow and curving where it abuts the property. Any driveway that allows multiple cars to exit onto Lewis Stevens creates a serious hazard. Traffic. You have heard about the traffic in the area until I know that you are aware of it. And it is not going to change in a better way. It is only going to get more and more serious and more and more congested. I believe that the carpenters have a right to develop their property. I also firmly believe that this proposed high-density development is not in keeping with the suburban nature of the neighborhood, and will be detrimental to the surrounding community. Therefore, I urge the council to deny this rezoning request. Thank you for your kind attention.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor and Town Council of Carey, I too am a member of Heritage Pines, and not in accord with the findings of the board. In fact, I was not aware of their even meeting about this.
Could you give us your name, please?
I too, as Fran spoke, live in the defined Heritage Pines annex.
Excuse me. Could you give us your name?
Because we're on the east side of Lewis Stevens Drive.
Could you give us your name, please?
And I certainly believe that Mr. Carpenter has...
Your name?
Can you hear?
We need your name for the record.
Oh, Joan Hall.
Thank you.
Yes. I'm one of the Hall kids. I really believe that Mr. Carpenter has the right and should develop this area. I just think it should be in keeping of what's around it. Across the road are the townhouses of Old Carpenter, and behind it are the villas of Heritage Pines. This is not high-density housing, but it can be affordable housing. It can be a housing that would attract a great many people. And because it's not high-density, not exacerbate the problems with the traffic, which will only get worse. I kind of see a nice area, and I'm not sure I espouse the ideas of the people with the neighborhood coffee shop. We live in an area of Carey where, on Davis Drive, we have three shopping centers, a huge apartment complex, and also there will be retail there. And if we go another two-mile radius to Morrisville Carpenter Road and Davis, we've got four more shopping centers with housing, multiple-family housing. We have banks. We have restaurants. My gosh, we can go to the Indian restaurant, the Italian restaurant. We can go down to Trevina Cabernet. I mean, it's wonderful. Biagis is there. So I don't really see why we need a lot of retail. I agree, it's a lovely place to take a walk. I have one issue, which is a little bit off the topic, but my husband is in a wheelchair, so when I take him out for a walk, I take him in a wheelchair. And there are places in the curb, in the east, we don't say curb, we say curb, for a ramp, which you could take a wheelchair down and bring it up on the other side of Lewis Stevens. However, there's no crosswalk. There has never been a crosswalk at either end of Muirbrook Place. And at Rush Hour, if I were to take my poor husband out in his wheelchair, we'd both be goners. Now, it's a little bit difficult pushing a wheelchair up and down the little hills on Lewis Stevens, but on the other side, there are benches where I could sit down and talk with him and be outside and observe the neighborhood. But I don't dare cross the street. So that's a little side issue, and that should be easy to take care of, because we've got crosswalks for the tennis club, we've got crosswalks for the Hope, Greenhope Elementary School. You know, there's not a problem. Just make a little crosswalk for us. So I'd love to see the area developed with some nice townhomes and villas, and I'd like to be able to go out and take a walk up to the library, up to the clubhouse at Heritage Pines. And I agree with a lot of things people say. So I'm not against development, just development that's in keeping with the rest of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else for this public hearing? Anyone at all? I see no one. I'll close the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions of staff or the applicant, or comments they would like to make. This is scheduled to go to a planning and zoning board meeting. I know it's probably too early to tell which one. Can you tell us which would be the earliest planning and zoning board meeting this would go to? Ms. Grant.
Because there's been a new zoning condition offered by the applicant for the elimination or prohibiting of the drive-throughs, and it's a requirement with the mixed-use sketch plans, so it's automatically going to require a second public hearing, actually, a third public hearing before the planning and zoning board. So the earliest it would go is December, more likely, January.
And that means...
But that will be on our website soon. That'll be updated soon.
And we're usually following the month after that, so it's at least a couple of months away, is what it sounds like. Very good. Just to give the people...
Yeah, and I just wanted to add, because a lot of people are interested in it, our staff has been successful in contacting Tony Teta, and a meeting is being set up, I think. I think it's being set up for Mr. France, and me, and a couple of staff members to meet with him about that meeting.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Grant. We'll now move to our second public hearing. This is item E2, is Public Hearing 13, REZ09. It's the Northwoods Plan Development District Amendment. Ms. Bierman of our staff will present this request. We'll hear from the applicant, and then we'll open the public hearing and hear from anyone who would like to speak about this rezoning. And council, again, will not take action. Tonight, we're going to refer it to our planning and zoning board. Ms. Bierman.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a public hearing on a request to rezone about 17 acres. It's located between North Harrison Avenue and Sudbury Drive. This is a vicinity map. The site is located about 1,000 feet north of the intersection of northeast Maynard Road and Harrison Avenue. This is a closer aerial view where you can see the surrounding neighborhood, Sudbury Drive, and North Harrison. The existing and proposed zoning district is Plan Development District. The subject property is identified as tract C1 in the Northwoods PDD. It's also in the Northwoods Mixed Juice Overlay District, which you can see outlined in the blue boundary in this slide. Currently allowable uses on this tract are a minimum of 75 percent of whatever square footage is developed for office use, and a maximum of 25 percent of the square footage in commercial use. Currently, the applicant is proposing up to 100 townhome units to be added as an alternate use on the site. I will point out, there is reference in your staff report to 109 units. Since that was written, the applicant has reduced the maximum number down to 100. There are no modifications to development standards requested as part of the Plan Development District or the Preliminary Development Plan, so all applicable standards of the land development ordinance would be met at the time of the site plan review. This is an illustration of the Preliminary Development Plan that accompanies the rezoning request. You can see here the site again in relation to North Harrison Avenue and Sudbury. Also, there is an access point. There would be an access point proposed on Sudbury, also another stub to the north for future connection. Also, as part of the request, there would be an extension of Harrison Point Drive to connect North Harrison Avenue and Sudbury. The plan designation is office and institutional. Even though residential use is proposed as an alternative use, the Comp Plan Amendment is not required since the property is in the Mixed Juice Overlay District. According to Carey's GIS maps, the site is impacted by stream buffers. Field determination of these features would be made at the time of the site plan review. This slide shows existing and proposed greenways in the area. There are no facilities that affect this particular parcel. North Harrison Avenue is designated as a major thoroughfare, and Sudbury Drive is designated as a collector in the Carey Transportation Plan. A traffic study was not required for this project, or this proposal, since the proposed use would generate fewer than 100 peak-hour trips. However, the applicant did voluntarily conduct a study, and that was prepared by the Towns On Call Consultant, VHB, in June of this year. Traffic mitigations that are included in the Preliminary Development Plan that are offered by the applicant include extension of Harrison Point Drive between North Harrison Avenue and Sudbury, and that would also entail a signal modification to account for the fourth leg of the intersection that would be created at that point. There is a sea-transfixed route running along Northern Harrison, along the North Harrison Avenue, along the frontage of the property. This shows a notification map of the properties that were notified of the public hearing. There is a valid protest on this site. There were petitions signed by the owners of nine properties. You can see those in the colored areas. There were no specific reasons for the protest listed on the actual petitions. However, I do understand that the neighbors will be presenting those concerns during the public hearing this evening. And this concludes staff's comments. I'd now call on the applicant to speak to the request.
Okay. If the applicant would come forward, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm J.W. Sherman with IDS here in Carey. Tonight, I want to start back at the beginning with this project. In 1982, Northwoods was the second PUD in Carey. It was the great vision for the new expansion into North Carey. At that time, the Jordan family proposed a project that was progressive, ambitious, and it was a big project for Carey at that time. The vision they created here on this parcel is identified as the same vision as it was 31 years ago. But since that time, North Carey has grown tremendously. A large part of this project had huge amounts of office and retail, in addition to multifamily and others in the area. But the main thing moving forward with that, the extent of North Carey was going to be here for a long time. But shortly thereafter, Weston comes along. SAS comes along. The office demand moved north up to the Weston area. This site identified on the original PUD document to be for two-to-plus 100,000 square feet of office, three-to-five-story buildings. While that would have been great if nothing else existed beyond that, other than residential, along with the growth in North Carey, those products shifted with that. So we're here today with a property that is zoned 25 percent retail, 75 percent office. It's not a required vertical mix, but it can be horizontally done on a 20-acre tract. With the five acres that you have out of that approved, you look below it, you can see from the convenience store all the way up through three additional restaurants, that would represent about five acres. So what you're saying here, moving northward, this site, based on traffic allocations, if it worked, could potentially have that type of development again. In addition to that, the remainder of the tract would allow up to whatever it could support, 100,000 square feet of office. If you look what's already in that area, with the amount of retail you have and the office uses in there, we believe that this is excessive for a community activity center of this scale and location. So one of the things we looked at with the owner and the developer is, what's the appropriate transition in density in this area? If you look at the staff report, it says it identifies only 28 townhomes and a community activity center. This is a component that would provide owner-occupied units that is severely underserved of a community activity center of this scale. Another thing you would look at from a land use perspective is, what is the appropriate transition of uses? One of the things identified by the previous cases, you put them near where they're walkable areas. This is an area that's walkable to those services. The other is appropriate densities. While this area is supplied appropriately with the attached apartment communities, the townhome product that would provide owner-occupied in support of new businesses and headquarters that are coming into North Carey, where are those new communities going to be that you're not heavily commuting to and from those areas? So we looked at, okay, across the street, you have apartments next to retail. Great. You've got apartments to the north of this site. Would you want more retail and office buffering that, or transition towns to that? You look to the west, the Verde Park community. You come from retail across the street, transition down to towns to lower the impact, and then to single-family. Again, going to the south, you have retail. Why add more? You already have an excess supply in that area. So what we did is pull back. We still set for the office component. Keep 25 percent there of that land area, which, again, would give you another 30,000-square-foot office building potential, similar to the one that is built now by the Jordan family adjacent to Harrison Point. In addition to that, behind, on the other side, St. Charles Place, all of that land is O and I also, and that's still sitting there residing for future land use, in enough supply for a long time. We also looked at the differences, well, how does this community center relate to others in the area? Is it excessive? Is it a blow? The density levels that you have there do allow this project to go in and still meet the parameters of your land use plan. Let's pull back and say another area in the town that may be of the same scale, Community Activity Center in Davis Drive and High House Road. What do you have there? Two retail centers. This has that. What do you have on the one corner? Additional retail, but nominal. Then you have three attached product areas, even though one is senior. You have an integrated townhome community behind Stone Creek, which represents about 22 units or 28 units, which is exactly what's in northwest of... about twenty-two units or twenty-eight units, which is exactly what's in Northwest today. But then you have wonderful Stone Creek townhomes, a smaller project of similar scale to what this developer wants to do, integrate it into that area. We just feel that it's too much office and retail as it exists today, and this would be a very viable use that would mitigate impacts to the adjacent property owners. One of the things that, when you talk about those impacts, what is that? It's traffic. And you have traffic there now. We looked at the change of use from this to the proposed use. It would offer an overall traffic decrease of seventy percent of the total daily traffic allocation, and it would be a total of eighty percent reduction in peak hour trips, again helping from concerns from development. Another thing would be, how would it be done as some of the concerns from our homeowners' meeting as it relates to crime? So we looked at the town's website. We looked at reports from the police department against attached product to detached product. Is there any difference in crime factors based on studies done by the town? There's no increase of crime from that. School capacity is one thing. Well, there's always concern for that, and we all share that concern. But one of the fortunate things we have now is we, the schools are positioning themselves with increased capacity and funding to be able to handle that, and that is a Wake County responsibility. Another thing that was a big one that came up is property values. How does, how widely would you put more attached density next to our homes? How does it affect value? So we hired Birch Appraisals to do an independent study to study the difference between the retail and office and resales. They went to different areas in Cary. We compared that to when townhomes were built in the same areas and the values, and there was absolutely zero impact in values, up or down, between either use. So what we're with is we think that this is a much more viable use that fills out and completes this area in North Cary. And with that, we understand there's a protest petition. We did have two community meetings, and to, for tonight, we don't really realize yet what the protest was because petition was not filled out what the protest was for. I'm sure we'll hear in a few minutes. But we would like to offer to the adjacent owners and/or anyone else through staff the potential to have another community meeting, staff-supported, for any issues or things that we can address to help their concerns. We would like to be a part of that, and we appreciate your time. Thank you.
Anything else from staff?
No, nothing.
Okay. This time, we'll open up the public hearing for this item, and I would invite the first
Hello. I'm Jeremy Medlin. I'm with MI Homes Raleigh. My company would be the developer and the builder. For those of you that are familiar with the site, it has a beautiful buffer, undisturbed buffer along Harrison Avenue, and also has some relief. If you were a commercial builder or retail developer, you may not necessarily look at that in a favorable light. My company seeks these opportunities out because we like cultivating basement townhome opportunities. Our homebuyers love them. It creates a real value and something that people can really appreciate for years to come. I'd also like to point out that adjacent to the site, you have numerous retail opportunities and restaurants and places for our homebuyers to shop and visit. And I'd also like to touch on the fact that you guys have created an amazing amenity right here in downtown, and that this project is about 1.1 miles from downtown, and it would be a great playground. We have been your neighbor. My company has been your neighbor. We have been your partner on many developments in the past and currently, and we'd just like the opportunity to do it again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Tom Hall, and I reside at 110 Cobalt Drive in the Verde Park subdivision, which is directly adjacent to the property that's being rezoned. I've lived in Northwoods all twenty-four years that I've been in North Carolina. I've been in that house since it was built, and I was in the apartments nearby. In order to expedite tonight's public hearing, I'm speaking on behalf of many of my friends and neighbors who reside in Verde Park. All were not able to attend tonight, but I'd like those who are present to please stand briefly and be recognized. Thank you. As many of you know, this is not the first time a rezoning request has been proposed for this land. Back in 2007, a developer attempted to have this property rezoned to high-density residential. We made many of the same arguments you'll be hearing shortly back in 2007, and the Cary Town Council soundly rejected that request. Next, we fast-forward to March of 2011. The Cary Town Council approved the rezoning for Track C5, which is just to the left of the Harris Teeter and right across the street from C1, this tract. This property was rezoned from commercial to high-density residential, and construction is well underway on those two-hundred-and-forty-eight apartments. During the council meeting, Mr. Jack Smith made a statement for the record, and forgive me for paraphrasing. He said, "He wanted to make it abundantly clear that the C1 tract across the street had better not come up for rezoning to high-density residential at any point in the future." Well, councilman, it seems your message was partially received. They aren't trying to get it rezoned to high-density, they just want medium. Now, as Town Council outlined at the beginning of the hearing, all but one of the homes in our neighborhood that was eligible to protest this rezoning petition have filed a valid protest. That one missing neighbor actually planned on being part of the protest, but they didn't get the paperwork completed before the Monday deadline, so it wasn't submitted. It is important that we make it clear that we did not file these protest petitions because we want to prevent the owner from developing the land. We filed these protest petitions because we believe this rezoning request is bad for our neighborhood, bad for the Northwoods community, and bad for Cary, and here's why we feel that way. The report that town staff presented states that this rezoning would still allow our community to meet the criteria that staffer required to measure and evaluate in conjunction with this case. The process the staff must follow is impacted by factors like the original Northwoods PPD, the Northwoods Community Activity Center Overlay, along with all the various rules and regulations spelled out in the town's land development ordinance. In most instances, this process works well, and the results can accurately reflect reality. Unfortunately, this is not one of those instances. The staff report states that there are one-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirteen high-density residential units, or apartments in layman's terms, that are either already built or approved in our community. That sure sounds like a lot, and in fact, that would rank as the largest number of apartments in any one area within Cary. But it turns out that number doesn't reflect our reality. By rule, the council can only include properties that, that, that they report that fall into the Northwoods Community Activity Center, or CAC for short. The CAC is an irregular box that only includes specific tracts of land that center around the Harrison Avenue and Maynard intersection. It does not take into consideration any other properties, even if those properties are right up against the Northwoods CAC. If you just include the properties that directly border the CAC, that adds an additional one-thousand-and-seventy-one apartments for a total of two-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy-four apartments in our neighborhood. Let me repeat that. That makes this one square mile of dirt that centers on Harris Teeter Shopping Center the most densely populated piece of land in all of Cary, and second place isn't even close. Talk to anyone from our neighborhood, especially those who live along Sudbury Drive, they can tell you about the amount of people that walk their dogs while flaunting Cary's pooper-scooper law, and also about all the trash that constantly accumulates along both sides of Sudbury. My family and I perform trash patrol on a regular basis because we care about our community. We are always bringing back multiple bags full of trash, and beer and wine bottles are commonplace. My wife treasures the ten-dollar bill she found, but it doesn't offset the fact that she's found used syringes and prophylactics. Adding over a hundred, or in this case, a hundred seventeen to twenty-eight hundred square-foot townhomes, with each likely to have three or more bedrooms, translates into even more people walking dogs, more people on the streets, and more people tossing trash. We feel we already have a problem, and adding more people will only make it worse. Now let's take a look at the next section of the staff report that doesn't paint an accurate picture of the impact this rezoning would have on Northwoods.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Sorry, your time has expired. You could leave your comments.
I'm actually leaving the next person.
Mr. Mayor, council members, good evening. My name is Bill Bond. I live at 101 Cobalt Drive, and I border the property we're discussing tonight. One of the sections in the rezoning report presents information about ratios of commercial and retail to office and institutional at projected build-out. The numbers in the report don't seem that bad, but it's because of how they're calculated. Interestingly enough, the single biggest contributor to the office and institutional total is West Cary Middle School. That doesn't seem like an office to me. If you don't include the school when you do the calculations, the ratio for commercial to office would be sixty percent commercial and forty percent office at full build-out without the rezoning. That's not horrible, but it's already skewed towards commercial. If the rezoning is approved and we perform the same calculation with the new square footage numbers, that ratio now becomes seventy-eight percent commercial and only twenty-two percent office, about eighty-twenty. That's not close to being balanced and still doesn't really reflect our reality. The numbers get even worse if you look outside the CAC and include the area that actually makes up Northwoods. In our world, Northwoods really include, really begins at the Lowe's Home Improvement Center at 54 and Maynard, goes down Harrison, past, goes down Maynard past Harrison and Reed Creek, and ends at Chapel Hill. That's what we consider a community. The town has split these into three separate activity centers, but the majority of the shopping, gas stations, banks, and restaurants are all at Harrison and Maynard. If you extend, these other areas, these other CACs are not really self-supporting silos. If you extend the commercial-to-office calculation and include the whole community, this results in an additional two-hundred-thousand square feet of commercial already in place with nothing added to the office total. The imbalance between office and commercial gets even bigger. Striking imbalance between commercial and office is an essential component in maintaining our community's future. Removing a hundred-and-thirty-thousand square feet of office and replacing it with more housing doesn't really strengthen our community, it sets it up for future and, for failure in the future. Next, I'd like to discuss the townhomes in our area. The developers have stated that Northwoods needs more townhomes because we don't have enough in the community. We beg to differ. The reason is there's not more townhomes in Northwoods now is because all the parcel lands already have apartment homes on them. They're already covered with apartments. The staff report only lists twenty-eight medium-density residential units in our area. While that's true, when you only look inside our CAC, if you just drive down the street on Maynard, you'll see a different picture. You see the new Ardmore at Reed Creek and Davidson Point, the Meritage Builders just cleared all the trees for the new townhomes there, and there's other units that are going to be going up. We don't have a shortage of townhomes, they just don't necessarily reside in that little box that the town calls our CAC. Finally, let me bring up a subject that everyone can relate to, and that's traffic. Traffic studies have a specific focus. They look at the number of trips at intersections during different times, and they estimate the number and time of additional trips that will result from additional construction. Then they calculate an A-through-F grade for that area. Office space is a destination, not a starting point. This means that trips associated with that property will be driving towards the location and not away from it during peak morning travel times and the opposite during the evening. On the other hand, residential space means that everybody's going to be heading out of the property onto Harrison, heading out towards, down Harrison Avenue, towards RTP at the same time as everyone else, adding additional capacity to the roadways. We feel that the number of trips may be less with residential, their impact can actually be worse because of this difference. In reading the study, you'll note there's already some D grades in our areas for our roads or our intersections, and we feel that residencies could make that worse. In addition, office space generates trips during the week, but generally has little or no impact on the weekends, whereas housings will generate traffic seven days a week. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Paul Riganti, and I live at 107 Cobalt Drive in the Verde Park subdivision. According to the developer's plan, all the viable space within the C1 tract will be covered in housing units. There will be no amenities, and the only property that won't be covered by buildings is the storm water retention pond and the Neuse River buffer along Harrison Avenue. In addition, this property is on a significant slope, so that means any grassy spots that exist are not likely to be flat or very usable. So where are all these new residents going to go when they want to go out of the house? If they're like the rest of the thousands of us in Northwoods, they, they'll take to the streets or make use of the local parks and greenways. Check out North Park, North Cary Park, the Black Creek Greenway, or God Bowl after work on a weekend, and you'll see that they're already pretty darn busy. Adding townhomes will only increase dispersing, while office space will not. Let's talk more about these townhomes. In summary, our Northwoods community is already the most densely populated location in all of Cary. Adding additional housing at the expense of office is truly the last thing our community needs. Approving this rezoning would result in an increase in population density where it is least needed and simultaneously increase the imbalance that already exists between commercial and office space in our area. We think it is naive to think that all these townhomes will be owner-occupied. With the lack of amenities and open space, these properties are more likely to be purchased for the sole purpose of renting them out to generate income. Rentals that are this big with this many bedrooms could bring families, but again, the lack of amenities and open space could also mean rentals populated by unrelated roommates, probably three or four, with each having their own car, driving to and from work during rush hour. Our neighborhood is already boarded by apartments on two sides. Our firsthand experiences have shown that some renters do not have the same motivation to maintain their dwellings and their community as those who have a vested interest in their property. The likelihood that some of these units will be rentals means that there's an increased risk our neighborhood will decline instead of thriving in the future. We feel this change would be detrimental to the future health and vitality of Northwoods. Therefore, we respectfully request that you put an end to this here and now and save everyone from having to invest additional time and resources on something that is not in the best interests of our neighborhood, our community, our town, not today and not in the future, as the population density will never decrease. Our recommendation is that you ask staff to examine our concerns by directing them to do, to look outside the CAC box. We are confident their research will confirm our findings. If you would like us to provide you with all the details that support the points we've raised, just let us know. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else for this public hearing? I see no one. I'll close the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions or comments.
Just questions. Mayor, property is currently zoned seventy-five percent office and twenty-five percent commercial. Is that correct?
That's correct.
How tall could the office buildings be constructed under current zoning ordinance?
There's, there's not a specific height limit that I'm aware of. We do look at, in looking at the overall height limit, there's a relationship between the height and the proximity to residential uses and the increasing, increasing height if you have additional setbacks.
Okay, but three, four stories wouldn't be out of the question?
Pardon?
Three, four stories wouldn't be out of the question?
I wouldn't think so.
Okay. Okay. That was really the only question I have.
Okay. Other questions?
You know, the individual that used my name to paraphrase, you know, from my memory, that was a pretty accurate paraphrase.
Okay. Thanks for letting us know. We'll see this at a future planning and zoning board meeting, and their recommendation will come to us at a future date, likely a couple of months from now.
Mayor, talking about that, the last gentleman who spoke said, "Stop this now." Explain for the, for the people about process and, and everything, and why we don't stop it right now.
We could stop this right now. We could stop this right now, but it is a property rights honor to propose a change. And I think it's our duty, if they want to propose a change, to let it go through the process and let it be heard by, one, the town council, two, by a group of citizens who make a recommendation to the council and be reviewed by staff, and then have a decision made by the council. And that's the process that we have, even though it is frustrating, especially for this group who keeps having to come out here year after year. I know they've been here three times since I've been mayor. I know that's frustrating, but it's the fair practice that- or the policy that we follow to allow our property owners to make proposals for the use of their property.
Thanks for doing that. I just think that's really important for people to be reminded of at times.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you, Ms. Spearman. We'll now go to our third item, item E3. It's a public hearing for 13 REZ 11. It's the Carey Park Plan Development District, and Ms. Spearman will once again present this request. We're going to hear from our applicant, then we'll open up the public hearing and hear for anyone who would like to speak on this rezoning. And council will not take action on this item tonight. We're going to send it to our planning and zoning board for their recommendation. Ms. Spearman.
Just bear with me for a moment, I got the wrong. There we go. Excuse me. This is for a public hearing on a request to rezone about 1.85 acres that's located at the northeast corner of Green Level Church Road and McCrimmon Parkway. This is a vicinity map. You can see in this area, an existing subdivision of Ridgefield Farms, the Wecroft subdivision to the west, and Camden Townhomes in this area. This is a closer view, aerial view of the site. You can see it's currently undeveloped. The existing and proposed zoning is Plan Development District. This tract is identified as tract SF10 in the Carey Park Plan Development District. Currently, the land juices on this tract are limited to four- is limited to four detached dwellings. The applicant is proposing to add a daycare center as an alternative use on the site with a maximum size of 10,600 square feet. Also, the applicant proposes a revision to allow averaging of the 30-foot streetscape that's required along McCrimmon Parkway. The minimum width of that streetscape would be 20 feet. No traffic mitigations are required under the current zoning. The applicant is proposing a right-in, right-out access point on McCrimmon Parkway and an eastbound left-turn lane on McCrimmon at Carey Glen Boulevard that would accommodate The land use plan designation is low-density residential. According to Carey's GIS maps, there's a very small portion of the southeast corner of the site that's impacted by a stream buffer. Field determination of this would be made at the time of the site plan review. This shows the existing and proposed greenways in the area. A street-side trail would be required along Green Level Church Road at the time of the site plan review. Green Level Church Road and McCrimmon Parkway are designated as major thoroughfares. And there is an existing, or excuse me, a future C-Trans fixed route that may be located along Green Level Church Road. This shows the- in shaded area, the properties that were notified of the public hearing. We did not receive a protest petition and staff did not receive any concerns expressed by the neighboring residents. And this concludes staff's comments, and I'll call on the applicant for any additional discussion of the request.
Okay. Thank you. With the applicant, if you please come forward.
Good evening. My name's Lee Perry with East West Partners. I'm actually the developer. Scott Murray, our land planner, is the technical applicant. I just wanted to point that out. This is one of the last remaining parcels in Carey Park. We were the- the original master developer of Carey Park, and this site all along has been zoned low-density residential, sitting on the corner of McCrimmon and Green Level. We've never really believed that it was viable for single-family development right there at that intersection. And over the recent- last year or so, it's become evident that it's very viable as a childcare location. And so we have- we've moved in that direction and seek to amend the PDD to add daycare as an approved use. We had the meeting with the neighborhood, there were no real concerns expressed. Originally, we were- we were up- we were proposing to upzone the property to medium density along with this request, which I think complies with the comp plan. We got some concern from one of the neighbors that they preferred we not do that, which we were fine with doing because the only true use we ever intended for the site was a daycare. So we modified the application to leave the zoning as low-density and just add the daycare use along with it. So really, not much else to say. We don't believe there's any concerns here, and we appreciate your consideration.
Okay. Very good. And if staff's completed their report, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Okay. At this time, I'll invite the first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? I see no one. I'll close the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions, comments.
I just have one question. In looking at the boundary and the borders of this lot, it seems a bit jagged. Is there- it doesn't actually go to the property- the line- property line doesn't seem to go to the property line above that. Is there a reason for that?
Well, there's actually a separate- this is a separate parcel with a small- this is an open space parcel.
Okay.
So there's- there is a strip of open space between the subdivision and this site that's part of the open space for the plan development.
Great. Thank you.
Good question. Other questions? We'll send this on to the planning and zoning board for their recommendation.
Okay. Good to have that.
We'll now move to the fourth public hearing. It's the annexation and rezoning pertaining to the Hallow Track. Ms. Grant and other staff will present this request. We're going to hear from the applicant, and we're going to open the public hearing for anyone who would like to speak at this annexation and rezoning request. Council will not take action on this item, will refer to our planning and zoning board. Ms. Grant.
Thank you. This is a request to rezone approximately 14.76 acres located at parcels at 1401, 1410, Davis Drive, and 5900 Farm Pond Road. There is an associated annexation petition that was submitted by the property owner, and because the subject property is not located in Carey's ETJ, annexation would be required before the zoning could be implemented. And the applicants asked that when it comes time for a final determination, you give them some indication of how you might be inclined to vote on this so that it wouldn't be annexed if it's not going to have the zoning approved. The vicinity map shows the subject property, highlighted in yellow. And here's a close-up aerial view that shows it's a combination of developed parcels with large tracts of land and some vacant property, single-family home and accessory buildings. Carey's land use plan designates the subject property for low-density residential, and the existing zoning is residential 40 Wake County. The applicant has proposed residential eight conditional use. You may recall this plan was before you, less than a year ago, with transitional residential conditional use and smaller lot sizes. The applicant came back with a revision to increase the lot sizes and was granted a waiver to the one-year waiting period, which is why it's before you tonight. Conditions proposed by the applicant would limit the use to detached residential, a maximum density of two dwelling units per acre, and a maximum of 28 lots. In addition, the applicant has proposed a 20-foot perimeter buffer in common open space along the western and northern property lines, and offered a condition that states that lots within 50 feet of Farm Pond Road shall be a minimum of 20,000 square feet. The applicants provided an exhibit that shows the location of required streetscapes, the perimeter buffer area, and that gray hatched area showing the 50-foot area. It doesn't mean that lots only in that 50-foot area would be 20,000 square feet, but any lots that contain land in that area would be 20,000 square feet. So as this moves through the process, we'll be sure that that's clear in the zoning conditions. Property owners within 400 feet of the subject property were notified. The property was posted and advertised. Because the property is not inside Carey's ETJ, it is not eligible for a protest petition. However, staff has heard from a number of citizens, residents predominantly living on Farm Pond Road, had concerns about traffic, lot size, street connectivity, and the rural character of Farm Pond Road. There was also community feedback with general support for the rezoning from the property owners to the north, the Sherwood Forest residents, and some concerns about site plan-related issues as to how storm water management would be handled, construction questions and things of that nature, but not in opposition to the general use. The site is impacted by a stream buffer according to Carey's GIS maps, and field determination would be required at the time of site plan review. Carey's Park's recreational cultural resources master plan shows the subject greenways and future proposed street-side trails in the vicinity of the subject property. There is a street-side trail proposed along Farm Pond Road, highlighted in blue. And Carey's transportation plan identifies Davis Drive as an existing major thoroughfare and Farm Pond Road as a proposed collector road, portions of Farm Pond Road as a collector road. At this time, I'd like to ask the applicant to come forward. This concludes staff's presentation, but I'm available following the public hearing for your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Grant.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm Steve Vining with L-Star. We're the applicant on this project. And I will start off by thanking the council for giving us another opportunity to get back in front of you. We were here earlier this year, and the council expressed some concerns. They had heard from the- from some of the surrounding residents, so not all of them were concerned with it. Some of them were, and, you know, we want to understand, we listened. We went back and we reviewed the tape of the hearing, made sure we went through it and identified what the council's concerns were. And I think you'll see Adam will talk a little bit more about the plan, but I think we've addressed it then. We've addressed those concerns. First, one of the concerns was the size of some of the lots, and that is how, I think it was council member Smith indicated he was concerned that these lots were potentially a little bit smaller than the Stone Creek lots. That was with the TR zoning. So we have come back with an R8 zoning, which makes those lots the same size as the Stone Creek subdivision to the north. Councilman France, I think, indicated that he thought that something with a larger lot adjacent to the Farm Pond Road neighbors would be appropriate, and that with a little bit higher density along Davis Drive would be the right design. And we agreed with that, frankly. I think that is what's happening. You'll see by the conditions that we've offered that that's exactly the kind of design we have proposed. Councilwoman Robinson, I think you indicated you had some concern about the streetscape there, and I think that's something that certainly will be handled in the- in the site plan review, but there'll be obviously the same kind of street buffer that's with the Stonecrest community or Stone Creek community there. It's frankly a very attractive streetscape along there. This site does have some challenges to it, and that is because of the railroad track, the entire street right-of-way has to come from that side of the road. So there are- there are some issues there. Councilwoman Adcock asked that we take a look at 20,000-square-foot lots, and we did that. And we've come back and proposed that the lots adjoining Farm Pond Road are a minimum of 20,000 square feet. And the design we have works with that kind of size to those lots and provides what we think is the appropriate transition between those larger lots, the farm- this new community and the community, the existing community to the north. And finally, Councilman Mirtha, you indicated you were concerned about lot size also, and again, we've proposed a little bit larger lot size that's entirely compatible with the existing neighbors to the north, and then the larger lot size adjoining the Farm Pond Road. The neighbors, mostly the Farm Pond Road neighbors, express concerns. The neighbors to the north are supportive of the project, as staff has indicated. They're concerned about traffic and connectivity. Some of those issues we can't control. The town has their connectivity requirements, and that's something that will, I think, be addressed in site plan as to whether or not a connection to Farm Pond Road is appropriate or not. Frankly, I think an argument could be made that that would address some traffic issues and some safety issues for ingress and egress out of Farm Pond Road because it would give an alternate way out with a controlled intersection, with controlled turn lanes, and a safer ingress and egress to that community. But again, that's something that will come up at site plan review. In short, I think we've created a plan here that addresses all the concerns that were voiced by council at the last hearing, and we've attempted to respond to the concerns of our neighbors there. And now I'm going to turn this over to Adam Ashbaugh, who's going to talk a little bit more about the plan and what's actually proposed here. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Adam Ashbaugh with L-Star Management here in the Triangle area. What I'm passing out here is one possible scenario for how this could be developed. As we talked about last time, we've done dozens of site plans on this property. This is one that incorporates all of the issues that we heard, both from the Farm Pond residents and from you as council, again, trying to demonstrate how we listened to the concerns and have tried to modify our plan. As Steve mentioned and Deborah mentioned, the first thing we did is we recognized that the R8 zoning of the Stonecrest community was something that we should continue on. So our first change, our most significant change is from the TR transitional use residential to the R8, which is an 8,000-square-foot lot minimum. And you can see these minimum lot sizes along Davis Pond Road. Again, to Mr. Francis, and a couple of your points were to concentrate that higher density and create a transition. Again, if you look not only north to the Stonecrest neighborhood, but across the railroad tracks to the high-density residential area that's part of Bishop's Gate, we feel like we're creating that transition that everybody had asked for there. Also, you can see abutting the Farm Pond development. We would have a minimum of 20,000-square-foot lots. The- again, just speaking to that transition of how we create something that is compatible with both the Farm Pond existing larger lots and the smaller lots, both in Stonecrest and across the railroad tracks in Bishop's Gate. Steve also mentioned the extension of the streetscape buffer. I think you can see that in the site plan that I've shared with you. And of course, this could change. This will have to be vetted with town staff, the planning, public works, utilities, all those people. Transportation will all have their say in how this ultimately gets built. This is just one scenario of how it possibly could happen to meet the criteria that are- that's kind of set forth, both in our zoning proposal and in the conditions that we're proposing. You can see one of the biggest concerns that could be addressed here is the traffic. We've heard a big concern about this not having- coming out of Farm Pond, coming in and out of Farm Pond, not having adequate site distance. Now, we would be comfortable either with a road connection, as shown on this plan, either with a road connection to Farm Pond or a cul-de-sac to Farm Pond. We feel like, and I know that the interconnectivity ordinance suggests that these connections should be made, we feel like if this connection is made, you can see where a safer exit and entrance into both this community and the Farm Pond community could be created. entrance into both this community and the Farm Pond community could be created. That's on a tangent piece of road. It's much flatter. It has better site distance in both directions. So again, in short, just looking through the requirements of, you know, the criteria for consideration in reviewing rezonings, going back again to this list, is it unlikely to have significant adverse impacts? We feel like our plan has modified enough to meet that criteria, not have significant adverse impacts on property, and also it's suitable for the subject property. And we're here to answer any questions if you have any. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. This time, I'll open up the public hearing and invite the first speaker forward.
Good evening, council. Mr. Mayor, my name is Martin Baum. I live at 6012 Farm Pond Road. I'm one of the eight residents on Farm Pond Road. We are a very small community. We all bought into this neighborhood many years ago. I've been there for almost nine years now. I think the most recent member of the neighborhood's been there about five years, up to about 20 years. We all purchased residences on this one piece of property, a little silent street that we kind of call a little piece of paradise. It's kind of an animal haven sanctuary, we call it. And on top of that, as you're driving in and out of Kerry down Davis Drive, I think it also creates a nice sense of comfort and a nice feel for the town of Kerry, people coming in and out, and kind of what the transitional use or transitional feel is with the parks and the schools in the area there and some new developments. So as we talk about transitional use, I would like to consider that as well. Interesting thing that I just heard and most of the neighbors just heard was that was presented to you was this was one proposal. So I'm not sure when we're ever really going to see the final proposal or the ideas that are being proposed or shared for this community that we could factually comment on or that perhaps you can factually comment on as well. Another thing that I wanted to talk about is the transition of the neighborhood. It was mentioned that a lot of the concerns you of the council was transitioning from the lots that were in the neighborhood next door to the lots that are off of Farm Pond Road and this existing piece of land. As you know, I think it's 14.7 acres of land that's being annexed. I have a little over six acres of land. I have horses, as well as the piece of land that you're looking at tonight has horses. This neighborhood is based around farms and horses, and it is a small, little piece of paradise in a community. It's not big shopping centers and a lot of the other things that you heard tonight. We would like to keep it that way. You know, we're not opposed to doing something with the land, but we would like to keep it, that little piece of paradise, and really keep it as a transitional use of land. As a matter of fact, myself and several of the other neighbors have expressed interest in buying the land. We've never even had the opportunity to discuss that with the people that own the land who are our neighbors. We would like to have the opportunity to buy the land, keep it as is, you know, maybe even build a nice home on there or keep it as farmland for the neighbors and a park for the neighbors and a nice look still for that transitional use in and out of Kerry. So I'd ask that you keep that in mind, that we've never even had that opportunity to purchase the land from existing owners. Based on that, I'd also like to tell you that there is a house right across from the proposed street that would come out onto Farm Pond Road. The letter that you have in front of you is from Linda Gardner. She's a realtor who's selling the house. It's 5921 Farm Pond Road. Ed couldn't be here tonight. The house has been for sale for about two months. They've had about 20 interested parties in it, three offers, but the minute that people find out or saw the signs that have been posted the last few weeks there, those offers have been rescinded, and they're also concerned about the traffic. In regards to property values, I can tell you that personally, through some personal situations that I've been going through myself, I've had two appraisers look at the land, my personal property, which is the land that backs up directly to the piece of land issue here, two appraisals in the last three weeks, and I can tell you that both of them have told me, and I'd be happy to show you those reports when I get them, that my land values are being impacted by this piece of property somewhere north of $100,000, but probably less than $200,000. So again, this development, the developers basically are making money off of this deal while we, as the neighbors who bought into this peaceful life there and Farm Pond Road, are now going to lose money based on this transition as well. In regards to the traffic, and I've mentioned this to council before, about five years ago, my son was sitting still on Davis Drive, turning left onto Farm Pond Road, and because the transition of the road, where it's almost a blind spot coming up into there, my son was hit at 65 miles an hour and almost killed. So again, tonight, I'd ask you basically to consider not approving this piece of land as, again, as I said, the neighbors that live on the street would like to purchase the land and keep it a nice little horse farm as it is and create that nice little transitional use from the properties going in and out of Kerry so people can see what Kerry is really about and the peacefulness of it that you've heard tonight from a lot of people. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jim Sherrill. I'm also a resident of Farm Pond Road. I would like to go on the record saying I have not seen this lady's proposal from L-Star. And with that being said, I'm passing around Google Map. We'd like to reiterate some of the reasons that it was denied last time. If you look at the first page once it gets around, Davis Drive at the intersection of Salem Church Road is a straightaway that's approximately about 1.2 miles long. It's a posted 45 mile-an-hour speed limit, but everybody knows that, you know, it's posted 45. People drive 55, 60 down through there. As Mr. Blum mentioned, Davis Drive does have an obstructed view. In the road, it's approximately 136 feet from Farm Pond Road is the view. Since 2010, they have approximately seven wrecks in that area of Farm Pond Road. If you go to the second page, at the top of it, you'll see the red arrow. That's on Davis Drive. That's where the two lanes on Davis goes into one, right by the Stonecrest subdivision. As we all know, when we're driving about in Kerry, when this happens, when you have two lanes going into one, you always have people that don't obey the law and speed by other cars. So this makes us a hazard. So now, if you look at the second arrow, that is where the road, the two-lane road would be proposed to go down into one on Davis Drive. And then the third arrow would be Farm Pond. We all remember the old arcade game Frogger, where the frog tried to get across the road without getting hit. Well, that's kind of how we feel on Farm Pond Road. We're trying to get out of the subdivision without getting hit, and with this, even the amount of cars, it would add to that confusion. Last picture that you'll see is of the obstructed view. It's kind of ironic that when I took that a couple of days ago, as the cars were coming through, one car had slowed down and one car almost hit the other one right at Farm Pond Road. It's because you can't see when you come down through that area. So the other thing that I remember from the previous meetings was everybody was preaching transition, transition, transition. So I looked up the definition of transition, and it says it's a state of change from one state to another, a gradual state of change. So if we're going from 20,000-square-foot lots to 8,000-square-foot lots, that is not a gradual change, that is an abrupt change. So that's our concern. You may have four lots that join Farm Pond that are 20,000 square feet, but the rest of those lots are going to be 8,000 square feet. So I thank you for your time, and I know that the council will make the right decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Kim Smith, and I live on Farm Pond Road, 5925. I guess I really would like to say I'm really sorry that we're here again. It seems to me you have a lot of things on your plate and a lot of decisions to make. And I'm kind of embarrassed that we're back here again, and mostly because I feel like this issue is one that's easily solved and one that I thought we had solved. I thought we brought a lot of great concerns to the council, and I thought that you did a great job deciding on them. Seems we're back to the drawing board again. And one of the things I'd like to bring up is I am a realtor, and in the town of Kerry, I don't have a problem finding houses for my buyers. I have buyers coming from all over, all other 49 states, and they love coming to Kerry, but I've never had a problem finding a home for one of them, ever. And I do love what you're doing for our town and for the town of Kerry. I love what you're building. I love, you know, some of the things that are, the changes that are being made. However, I feel like we, as Farm Pond residents, would like to have a little more control on this parcel. This parcel, as you know, we have just mentioned that we have offered and would love to buy this parcel and help out our town of Kerry by making it an equestrian park. There's already a barn there. There's already horses there. I have a daughter who's 16, who would love the opportunity to start doing more lessons and bring more horses to the area. You have a huge equestrian community, a huge following, and everyone, every day, not every day, but that's an exaggeration, but I have people stopping at my house asking me if I will let them board their horse at my house. My house is not set up like that, but I'm on, my house has five acres, but we have an additional parcel that has additional four and a half acres, which allows us to have horses and have the space. But this particular parcel has 14-something acres and already has a barn there that is very suited for our equestrian community. So I would really like maybe that as a consideration for Farm Pond residents to have the opportunity to purchase the property from the seller. We have had that as an open voice to the seller, but it's never been communicated or there's been no dialogue back and forth for whatever reason, and we'd love that opportunity with the seller. But in finishing and closing, I really appreciate your time again. I'm sorry that we're in front of you again, but the request is the same. We'd love for you to just take a deep breath, postpone this thought. You have a lot on your plate. We'd like this one to be kind of, just let's slow down. Let's wait a minute. We know that all the way up on High House and Davis Drive, there's a lot going on up there, and there's a lot of new cars going to be on Davis Drive. My daughter's 16. You heard her spoke last, speak last time we were here. She kind of made fun of me because I'm the new mom with the new driver who's 16, and when she pulls out onto Davis Drive from Farm Pond, I pray every single time because I just don't know what's going to happen. And then when she's coming back home from somewhere and she is turning onto Farm Pond from Davis Drive, I always tell her, don't ever take your foot off that brake, put your hazards on, because the hump coming north, you never know. And I have had people lock their brakes up on me several times, which brings you to the next point. On the accident report that you've seen from the town, you've only seen a few accidents over the years, which doesn't really mean a whole lot that we can't put a light there. There's no deaths there, so it really doesn't have an impact yet. Well, just leaving the other day in the morning, there was a little high schooler coming out, not from Farm Pond, but the next neighborhood up. She got in a head-on collision and tore off the front of her car. So there are some issues on Davis Drive, not just at Farm Pond Road. And again, I would love for us just to take a deep breath. Let's pause. Let's think this through, because once you agree to this, we can't take it back. The next point I'd like to make is the Stone Creek residents have agreed to this, but they've also been told a lot of things that the developer cannot bring forward once they've agreed. So the residents have agreed, once the developer comes in, he's going to sell it to a builder, but that agreement goes away when a builder purchased the property. So I feel like there's some weird things going on there, and there's no promises that can be made, like the connection to Farm Pond, because they don't have control over that. Planning does, zoning does, and there's other people that have control over that. Right now, I feel there's promises being made they can't keep, because once they develop it, they're going to go ahead and sell it to an actual builder. And once that builder has it, those verbal agreements will go away with that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mayor, council, I'm Raymond Davis, and I know you know where I live, Farm Pond Road, 6032. I ask you, if you look at the site plan and you look north at Stonecrest, you see a portion of that Stonecrest development that is not developed. As valuable as this land is, why is that not developed? And you notice that the plat of land we're looking at joins that property, so that means a portion of this plat cannot be developed either because of drainage and because of slopes and because of terraces that have eroded the land over the years. So if there's 28 houses going on 14 acres and some of the land can't be developed, does that mean we're going to scrounge the other houses together? Now, you've got a plat of something that was given to you by the developer. I don't know that we have seen that. He mentioned that there would be 20,000 square feet per lot, but how many lots have 20,000 square feet? They have made that concession. So you've heard the transition. I would ask you as a council to review your transition philosophy, the one you've developed. Is it accurate? Is it right for this development? Second thing, you've heard enough about traffic. I can tell you, it's hazardous sometimes there. It's where we live. It's Davis Drive. It's traffic. And they mentioned that with the third lane into this development, that we can go there to access our development. We go into their subdivision to travel through there to get to us. I don't think you want to go to another, you don't want to drive to Apex to come to Kerry. We don't want to drive in another subdivision to get to the existing one we have, which means it would open it up to Farm Pond. I think that's a bit of opposition. The rezoning mentions that this is a petition, 13A20, location 1401, 1403 Davis Drive and 5900 Farm Pond Road. Does it not? I can't get away from what I said a year and a half ago, and I come back to the covenants that I bought when I bought this land in 1987. It was the intention of the owner at that time, with the plat that we all got at the time we purchased it, to keep this in space, because good neighbors have a reason and space to live. I keep coming back to the covenants that is in our registered deeds office in this great county, and that is registered, and that we agreed on, that is a part of this Farm Pond subdivision. But yet, that never comes up. I ask us tonight, if you look at the total package of development and more space, is this the best use for this land? The transition that you need, your infrastructure is creating spaces, as already been noted tonight, folks from everywhere coming to Kerry, and that's good. It's a great, it's a great problem, I guess, to have that people want to live here, but in your infrastructure, don't they need some space somewhere, too? And is this the best use for that land? I leave you with the same thought our other neighbors have left you with, that decision you make is something we have to live with. We hope we're as pleased with the decision you make as you are. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else for this public hearing?
Good evening, mayor and council members. I'm Gary Howell. I'm the owner of the property, and I'm not a big bad wolf. I'm just trying to do something that I felt like was the best thing for my family. My father purchased this property. It was originally off the map. It was 115 acres originally. He purchased it in the late 1940s. And we've lived there, I've lived there all but eight years of my life on the property at some point or another. It was a farm. I worked there on the farm growing up, went to college, came back, lived in Kerry for four years, and then moved back out there to the farm. As far as my, you know, I'm not trying to sell it just to make a bunch of money or for greed or for need, but at my time in my life, I just feel like it's the practical thing to do. They talk, they've, the other people have said, we've offered to buy it. I put them in touch with my realtor. The problem is, the prices they're offering doesn't even make the property tax value. I've heard a lot about property tax values, but mine haven't been going down. I've also, you know, just feel like this is a practical thing for me to do at this point. I also have an older sibling that's over 60 years old who's mentally incompetent, and I've got to figure out some way to, you know, look after him in his later years. So, you know, we've been dealing with this, you know, 18 months now. Steve and Adam came back with a proposal that I feel like is a good transition. My dad actually built Farm Pond Road. He paid to have it paved, and he was a businessman. He would have liked to put in acre lots all the way down Farm Pond Road, but at the time, there were no water and sewer available, so the county required these big lots in order to get a septic tank. You haven't heard that. That's why he would have been happy That's why, he would have been happy to subdivide it right on through there, just like you did, you know, but, um, that's basically all I've got to say. They have had an opportunity to buy it, but they wanna buy it little pieces, which is not, you know, really feasible for me at this time. Thank you for dying.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak at this public hearing?
Hello, Mayor, Town Council, my name is Kim Sherrill. I work, I work. I live at 6005 Farm Pond Road, and we moved there, or we bought our land over 15 years. We've been living there 13. We have watched Cary grow, we've watched the traffic on Farm Pond Road, on Davis Drive pick up. I'm also not here to talk about traffic, I think we've heard quite a bit about that area of Cary and how things are growing and the traffic issues, but I am here to talk to you about Farm Pond Road. I love the area, I love the animals that I see around there, I love seeing horses every day, I love seeing people pull over, take their children out of the car, go up to the fence and pet the horses, ask us about them, talk about that kind of life that they once saw when they were growing up themselves. I'm also someone that likes nature. There are beautiful oak trees on this property that are at least 50 to 60 years old. I've read in the paper here recently where people are asking you to save trees, save some of the natural areas. I applaud that. I'm one that, there's an old barn somewhere, I'm one to please go pick up some of the barn wood and bring it home and build picture frames out of it, so I can keep those memories alongside me and share with my grandchildren. I really, we have asked to have the opportunity to buy this land, we have spoken with the realtor, we have asked him to have the owner and him contact us whenever there are offers on the land, or if offers fall through, could they come and speak to us? We never hear back. We have not had an opportunity to engage in some kind of discussion over buying this land. I would like to see it stay as it is, even, and if it can't and it has to be developed, I would like to go back to what the covenant says, to please keep these lots at 20,000 square feet. It's not just the perimeter, the request was for all of the lots in there, if they were to be split, to be met 20,000 square feet. I think in the last time we were here, over a year ago, Ms. Adcock said, "Let's look at the 20,000 square feet, let's, let's," and I interpreted that as all of the lots to be 20,000, not just the ones that touch Farm Pond. You can walk, you can go in and see them on 20,000, and then you see sandwiches, row houses in there, and that's not what we want. We want our neighbors, whoever they may be, to enjoy coming into that area as well as we do and we have so far. I would, my personal would be to leave it as it is, have the opportunity to leave it as a horse farm, turn it into a park, do something to preserve the ponds that are there and the trees, and have it be the first site coming into Cary from Apex, as this is what Cary is all about. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else for the public hearing? I see no one. We'll close the public hearing and open it up to council members for questions. Ms. Adcock.
So I just wanna make sure everybody knows that we're not, it's not our job to broker land deals, that's just not something we can control, that's, we're being asked, what's an appropriate use of the land, so we can't help with that. And so I have a couple of questions, I think, for staff. Is it true that the land to the north of this parcel is undevelopable?
There's a stream buffer, there's a, there's a stream buffer to the north that's, uh, let me-
And is that why that land is vacant, and what's the impact, does that-
Let me pull this up.
-extend into this parcel and what, right, show us that again.
Well, again, these are, these are-
I realize that you have to be confirmed.
Right, right, exactly, and there is a Farm Pond here, you know, on the property, but those are, those are things that the applicant's gonna need to address as to whether or not that's a possible BMP site, you know, that this is all, this is all stream buffer area on the site plan, so there is no development in this area here.
Mm-hmm. So it's been stated that that would, you know, require, if there were gonna be 28 units, that the lots be smaller, but the condition is 8,000 or 20,000, so I just-
Correct, right, right.
I think, and then the other thing is, could you please point out, what is the address for, of 50, show us here, what is the address of 5900 Farm Pond Road?
Oh, the subject property.
Because that's part of the, is it?
Uh, that's this one right here.
Okay, so it's the one right on the corner.
I believe, yeah.
But everything else is Davis Drive? So that's the frontage then, is the, is, and the rest of it fronts Davis?
Yeah, and you see, this has got, this has got frontage right here, that, it's kind of a flag lot for access, I'm sure it was an access easement when that was carved out.
But that's why that address is 5900 Farm Pond Road, and everything else is Davis Drive? Okay. And, and there's been a lot of, I remember when this came before us before, a lot of conversation about the covenants.
Yes, we did.
And so, and that's still not clear, and the question is-
We actually did research that.
Okay, tell us about that then, because the-
Mr. Howell had restrictions that applied to the property that he conveyed. He did not have those restrictions on his property that he owned, and we don't have any authority-
Okay.
-to enforce that, you're correct, but, but for the sake of just having clear understanding, we looked at the paperwork and saw that the restrictions applied to the property that he sold.
So in other words, all the other property owners on Farm Pond Road, if they were to sell their property, they would be restricted to 20,000 square foot lots or greater.
Correct.
But his property is not held to that.
Did not, we did not see any evidence of restrictive covenants on his property.
Okay, because I just think that question keeps coming up.
Right.
And, you know, I would just say to the developer that this definitely looks better than what we saw before in terms of density and everything, but, you know, it remains to be seen if it's the best use of the land.
Other comments, questions? Okay, this will go to the Planning and Zoning Board for their recommendation, and we will see this in the future. Thank you, Ms. Granon. We now move to our fifth public hearing. This is a public hearing on 13 RZ17, the Meacham property at Cary Park. Ms. Beerman of our staff will present this request, we're gonna hear from our applicant, and we'll open the public hearing and hear from anyone who would like to speak about this rezoning. Council will not take action on this item tonight, we're gonna refer it to our Planning and Zoning Board. Ms. Beerman.
This is a request to rezone about 15 acres at the northeast corner of Green Level Church Road and Carpenter Fire Station Road. This is a vicinity map, you can see to the south Cary Park Town Center and to the east Camden Park. This is a closer aerial view, there is an existing residence at the corner of the intersection. This aerial is a little bit dated at this time. A grading plan was approved to allow stockpile on this site, so it has been graded and seeded in accordance with that stockpile plan, a portion of the site. The existing zoning is R40, it is in the Cary Park Mixed Use Overlay District, so the proposed zoning is the MXD Mixed Use District. This particular parcel is not within a planned development district, but there are several PDDs within the area, so this is just a map to show some, how some of those different areas fit together. Proposed zoning, as I mentioned, is MXD Mixed Use District. As you know, MXD cases do include a preliminary development plan, this is the PDD for this project, and I would point out too that the orientation is a little different on this site in order to fit it on the page. Summary of the preliminary development plan, some of the key aspects of it, the use would be for commercial, the PDP shows five development parcels that could include five to eight buildings for a maximum total of 85,000 square feet of commercial area. They are not requesting any modifications to development standards. This shows the Cary Land Use Plan, it is in the Northwest Area Plan, the plan designation for the site is commercial. The site is impacted by stream buffers indicated, as indicated on Cary's GIS maps, this would be field determined at the time of the site plan approval. There's also a small area of floodway associate, or floodplain associated with Morris Branch along the northern portion of the site. According to the Parks and Greenways Plan, there's a proposed streetside trail along Green Level Church Road. Both Green Level Church Road and Carpenter Fire Station Road are designated as major thoroughfares. A traffic study was prepared in June of this year. This summarizes the traffic mitigations that are included in the, or offered by the applicant. Just as a summary of those, there would be, the applicant is offering payment in lieu for a traffic, for installation of a traffic signal at Carpenter Fire Station Road and Cary Glen Boulevard. Also includes installation of a traffic signal at the northern access point on Green Level Church Road and various turn lanes on Green Level Church Road and a leftover access on Carpenter Fire Station Road. With regard to transit, there is a possible future C-Trans fixed route along Green Level Church Road. This shows the properties within 400 feet of the site that were notified at the public hearing. There were no citizens' concerns expressed to staff, and we did not receive any protest That concludes staff's comments, that would now call the applicant to, for their presentation.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Glenda Top with Glenda S. Top and Associates, and I'm here tonight representing the applicant, the Meacham family. The request is to rezone the property from R40 to MXD. We have submitted a preliminary development plan to accompany the rezoning, and as staff has pointed out, the property is located in the Cary Park Mixed Use Overlay District. The land use plan designation for the property is commercial and parks and open space, and our plan that we submitted does comply with the adopted land use plan. The preliminary development plan proposes up to 85,000 square feet of commercial with no one building being greater than 40,000 square feet, and uses allowed under the commercial designation would be both retail and office. The proposed preliminary development plan complies with all standards in the town's land development ordinance, and this includes required buffers, streetscapes, again, wanting to state that no modification to the town's land development ordinance is being proposed. A traffic analysis was required for the rezoning. The preliminary development plan addresses all the recommendations of the transportation analysis report, and conditions have been offered that commits us to those improvements. The property, again, is located within the Cary Park Community Mixed Use Center. Based on the criteria for community centers, the recommended amount of residential development has been met at this location. There is room for additional commercial development within the center. The proposed commercial services on the subject property will complement existing and future medium and high-density residential development by providing services within walking distance of the residential development, and we believe that there is a need for the additional commercial development in this part of Cary, given the amount of residential development that has occurred in recent years. The proposed rezoning meets the guiding principles for the town's growth management plan. The plan encourages commercial development in preferred growth areas, the Cary Park Community Center is a preferred growth area. There is infrastructure that is adequate not only to serve this development, but to also serve the proposed development, but also to serve existing development in the area. We have shown on the preliminary development plan that we are protecting natural resources and open space, and the addition of commercial development within walking distance of existing and future high-density housing does meet one of the goals of the Affordable Housing Plan in Cary. Also want to point out briefly that the plan does comply with each design principle for mixed-use centers. The plan creates a sense of place by providing pedestrian amenities and a community gathering space that will be a vocal point for the community. Stormwater facilities will be designed as site amenities. The plan provides for both vehicular and pedestrians' connections, both into and within the site. There are public sidewalks along Carpenter Fire Station Road, Green Level Church Road, and adjacent to the town home development. Parking areas of the development have been broken up into smaller areas with ample landscape areas, and again, the plan accommodates pedestrians, bicycles, and potential transit users. Want to talk just a little bit about our meetings and interaction with the adjoining property owners. We've been very proactive with the residents and planning staff throughout the entire zoning process to develop a plan that both addresses the concerns of the residents and addresses the goals and objectives of the town. To date, we have held one mandatory meeting and multiple voluntary meetings with property owners within 400 feet of the proposed rezoning. We held these meetings to keep everyone advised of our plans and also to make the residents aware of comments that we had been receiving from staff. Also want you to know that our last meeting was held November 6th at Bond Park Community Center, because we felt it was important to, before tonight, to update the residents one more time as to what we are proposing. At each meeting, residents attended who live either adjacent to our property or with, or within 100 feet of the proposed rezoning. Based on the comments from the most affected property owners, we believe we have a plan that addresses the issues raised by the residents. This is reflected in the fact that no protest petitions were submitted and no, and staff did not receive any comments from staff, I mean, from the residents. It was important to us to engage the residents early and often in order to have a plan that the residents could support. They are fully aware of what we are proposing, the residents support additional commercial development at this location, they support the flexibility of the plan in not limiting possible uses on the site. They believe that the requirements of our plan and the requirements of the LVO will provide them the protection they need from any future development on the site. We have also worked diligently with the planning staff to carefully put together a plan that has no deviations or requested variances. We are complying with the requirements of the land development ordinance, and the preliminary development plan meets all the requirements of the design guidelines. In conclusion, we are very committed to delivering a project that will bring much-needed services to residents living in this portion of Cary. The proposed rezoning meets the goals of Cary's comprehensive plan, and we ask for your support. I will be happy to answer any questions, and there are other team members here tonight if you have questions of them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And at this time, I'll open up the public hearing and invite the first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at the public hearing? I see no one will close the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions or comments.
Go ahead.
Um, I don't really have any particular comments, I was, I've seen this plan already before tonight. I was a little disappointed that there wasn't better connectivity between the neighborhood to the east and this community, not just having a road access, because you'll see on the design that they do have a road access that they kind of push to the north, just that we have a road here that, as you can see, kind of runs along the southern part of that community, oh, sorry, go back one, I'm sorry, Mary, and then, and then we'll scoot back here, but, on that slide, we were just looking at, there was an east-west road that ran through the subdivision, and it looks like it's ready to tie into whatever is built to the west, which would be this community, and what the applicant is proposing to do is close off that stub and then move the connectivity over to the north, you can kind of see that right there. And I just felt like it was a lost opportunity, I would have liked to have seen something go in here that integrated with the town home community in a, in a very harmonious way, something that would create this kind of walkable feel, something that the people would be very proud of, it'd be, it would actually enhance the town home community, rather than having this kind of like wall, like we don't really exist next to each other, and just, you know, don't look over here on this side, you have to go around to get there. That was just my thought, I think that the residents who live in the town homes actually are very pleased with the stub being closed off, and I guess maybe since the project is developing the way it is, maybe that's best for them, I don't know, but I just would have hoped to have had something that was a little bit more complimentary and cohesive.
Yeah, that, that was exactly the point I was gonna make, the only other addition I would- The only other addition I would make is, if I remember right, Ms. Spearman, the west side of Green Level Church Road, there's a, there's a, like a cliff almost. I mean, it's, there's a great big swale, so it's really difficult. Eventually, when there is development or people want to walk from the neighborhood that's west of Carpenter Fire Station to this area, it's very difficult to, to make, to traverse that. You'd have to cross the street, walk down, cross it back again, so there's, there's no real connectivity there from what I could see. I know that's not on the developer to fix, the other side of the street, but I would like to see some sort of comprehensive plan that addresses that. And I, I absolutely agree with you. It seems like a lost opportunity when I look at areas, like we're close to where we live at Stone Creek. The town home community is a part of the retail and commercial, and I think that's why people go to live there. I think that's a, a lost opportunity that I hope the, the developer will take a look at, because I know this is just a concept plan and they're not bound by this.
Okay. Anything else? All right. This will go to the Planning and Zoning Board, and we'll get a recommendation for them in the future. Ladies and gentlemen, we've been going at this for about three hours. We're going to take a five-minute break, and we're going to come back and resume.
Yay. I didn't think it was going to break. That's all.
Convene our council meeting at this time and continue with our public hearings. We're on public hearing number six. Item E6 is the public hearing for 13 REZ 22. It's 956 West Chatham Street. Spearman of our staff is going to present this request. We're going to hear from our applicant, and then we're going to open the public hearing and hear from anyone who would like to speak about this rezoning. Council will not take action on this rezoning this evening. Ms. Spearman.
This is a request to rezone about .86 acres at 956 West Chatham Street. This is a vicinity map. You can see West Chatham Street, Maynard Road, and to the east, or to the west, the railroad tracks. This is a closer view. There is an existing office building on the side. It's two stories. It's about 9,700 square feet. There are also some industrial uses to the north, south, and west, and that includes some outdoor storage of vehicles and equipment. Also, across West Chatham Street, there is an existing daycare center. The current zoning of the property is industrial. The proposed zoning is office-institutional conditional use. The zoning conditions would limit uses to office and school use. The school use would be limited to 40 students and 4,500 square feet of the floor area, which is approximately half of the building. The land use plan designation is office-industrial. According to Cary's GIS maps, there are no stream buffers that would impact the site, and there are no existing or proposed greenway facilities that impact the site. West Chatham Street is designated as a major thoroughfare, and the nearest transit route is a C-Trans fixed route on northwest Maynard Road, which is about 350 feet to the north. Properties that are shaded are those within 400 feet where property owners were notified of the public hearing. We did not receive any comments from residents, and no protest petition was submitted. And that concludes staff's comments. Now I'll now call the applicant to provide any further comment.
Okay. I would invite the applicant forward at this time.
Evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Hal Stevens, and I've been a resident of Cary since 1973, and the fam, the property's been in my family for 35 years. And the building, I think it was built in 78, so I want to introduce you to Valerie, proposed tenant.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. I'm Dr. Valerie Anderson. My functional role is head of school for Triangle Collaborative School, which is the small private school proposed to occupy this space. Triangle Collaborative School is a small, independent, private college preparatory school serving students in grades six through 12, and offers parents in the Triangle area a refreshing alternative for students who thrive in smaller, more supportive, and more creative learning environments. Our holistic approach to educating students focuses on research-based and developmentally appropriate strategies and best practices for fostering academic engagement, personal leadership development, and service learning. We believe small classroom settings foster positive and mutually beneficial interactions between students and teachers, and allow for a more customized and individualized approach to educating students. Therefore, our maximum class size is eight students per class. With these small ratios, we've been able to work holistically and responsively with both students who need more academic challenge and an accelerated curriculum as they prepare for college and beyond, as well as students who may need a more modified pace to master core subjects. This approach has allowed us to match students with appropriate community-based organizations and businesses for internships and electives, providing them with invaluable, hands-on preparation for their futures. We have voluntarily capped our maximum student enrollment capacity at 40 students, both in consideration of traffic concerns and because small class sizes are a necessary and critical part of our model and educational approach. Thanks very much. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. This time, I'll open up the public hearing and invite, invite the first speaker forward. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? See no one? I'll close the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions or comments.
I would just say, finally, an easy one. Gosh, anytime you can turn industrial property over into office and institutional, I just don't see how you say no to that, so. That's my.
And actually, I thought the concept was very interesting. It was like, it sounds really good. Other comments? Okay, very good.
Sounds like a nice school.
We'll forward this to the Planning and Zoning Board for their recommendation. Thank you, Ms. Spearman. We'll now move to our last public hearing of the evening, and that's public hearing 13 REZ 24 Marquee Homes and Pittard Sears Road. Ms. Grant, and of our staff, will once again present this request. We're going to hear from the applicant, and then we're going to open the public hearing for anyone who would like to speak about this rezoning. Council will not take action on this tonight. Ms. Grant.
Thank you. This is a request to rezone approximately 1.
This is a request to rezone approximately 1.46 acres located on the south side of O. Kelly Chapel Road and to the west of Pittard Sears Road. An aerial view shows the subject property is currently vacant. Cary's land use plan designates the property as medium-density residential, and the existing zoning is residential 40. The proposed zoning is residential 8 conditional use. The applicant has proposed conditions to limit the use to detached residential and a maximum of three lots. Property owners within 400 feet of the subject property were notified by mail of the request. The property was advertised and posted. And because the property is located in the joint Chatham-Cary land use plan, the Chatham County Planning Department was also notified of the request. There were no protest petitions, no inquiries, and the Chatham County Planning Department let us know that they did not have any opposition to this request. The site is not impacted by any stream buffers or floodways according to Cary's GIS maps. There is a proposed greenway, street-side trail along O. Kelly Chapel Road. And O. Kelly Chapel Road is designated as a major thoroughfare. At this time, I'd like the applicant to please come forward, and then staff is available following the public hearing for your comments.
Given this type of workout, going up and down the steps this evening.
I feel like you know me, but I'll say my name for the record. Glenda Stopp with Glenda S. Stopp and Associates. I'm here representing the property owner, Marquee Homes, Tom Hankins. And this is probably going to be the shortest I've ever spoken, and I'm sure you'll be happy. I'm not going to repeat anything that staff said. I'm just going to say that Mr. Hankins plans on building three custom homes on the property. And as staff pointed out, we are well within the Chatham-Cary joint plan. So if you have any questions, I'm here, and Mr. Hankins is here, and we'll be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. This time, I'll open up the public hearing and invite the first speaker forward, anyone who would like to speak on this rezoning. Anyone at all? Closing the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions or comments. Seems like another pretty easy one.
If I could, please interject one comment, too. Custom homes is not a zoning condition. So, yeah. I should have spoken up with a previous case and made sure that you knew that a handout had not been submitted as zoning condition. So just wanted to make sure that we clarified that what you see in the staff report are the zoning conditions.
Okay.
But it is still three single.
Three single-family detached homes.
Is the road widened? Is O. Kelly Chapel Road widened along that frontage? And if not, are the three homes going to have to cover the cost of widening right there? And then my next question is then is what kind of buffer is going to be between O. Kelly Chapel?
Let's see. O. Kelly Chapel Road is designated as a major thoroughfare, two-lane undivided, approximately 60 feet of right-of-way. And the future section is four-lane with a landscape median and 100 feet of right-of-way. So there would be some road improvements required along O. Kelly Chapel Road.
Okay.
And it's a 50-foot streetscape.
Other questions? Okay. We'll forward this to the Planning and Zoning Board for their recommendation. Thank you, Ms. Grant. We now move to land development discussion items. This is item F, the annexation rezoning and consistency statement for the Slay property. Ms. Beerman of our staff will present this request, and we're going to hear from the Planning and Zoning Board representative. And council may take action on this tonight. Ms. Beerman.
This item is a request to annex and apply the initial town of Cary zoning to about 39 acres at 925 Pittard Sears Road. This is a vicinity map. You can see the site in proximity to Amberly to the east and Wecroft Reserve to the west. There is an associated annexation petition, 13A14. The property is in Chatham County outside of the ETJ, so the annexation is required in order to apply the initial zoning. Also point out here, when you make your decision tonight, the annexation decision is made prior to the zoning decision. So if you're inclined to not approve, you may want to discuss that so the applicant would be aware of that and have the opportunity to withdraw. The existing zoning is R1 in Chatham County. Proposed zoning is R12 conditional use. The proposed zoning conditions would limit land use to detached dwellings with the maximum density of 1.4 units per acre. This is a reduction in density from the original two units per acre that were presented, as presented at the public hearing. Also, conditions for an enhanced buffer along the northern property line. There are several conditions listed here that are underlined. These are further conditions related to providing more transition area along the northern boundary adjacent to subdivision that's in Chatham County. And these underlying conditions were added after the initial public hearing and presented to Town Council at a public hearing, I mean, to the Planning and Zoning Board at a public hearing. And this is the exhibit that shows the enhanced buffer and increased building setbacks. There was an additional building setback provided, little 50-foot building setback provided along the border of the game lands associated with Jordan Lake. This shows the land use plan. It is in the Chatham-Cary joint land use plan with the designation of LDR. And in the joint plan, that the minimum density is, or the maximum density is two units per acre. At the Town Council public hearing, there were a couple of concerns addressed. One were related to the transition to the north and the potential impact on an existing well. And also, there was some discussion about the difference in the recommendations related to buffers by the core lands. We did get clarification on that, that the 150-yard buffer that was recommended by the Wildlife Resources Commission is actually where game lands allow hunting with guns. In this particular area, the only bow hunting is allowed. And I did speak with the staff at the Wildlife Resources Commission, and they were satisfied with the 50-foot buffer between the game lands and any residential units that would be developed. At the Planning and Zoning Board public hearing, one neighboring resident spoke in support, noting that the previous concerns related to the proximity to the well had been addressed with the additional conditions to increase the lot sizes adjacent to that northern border. And the Planning and Zoning Board recommended approval by a vote of seven to one, and then I would ask Mr. Swanstrom to speak to the planning board's recommendation.
As you've noted, the Planning and Zoning Board did vote seven to one to recommend approval for this, this application. There were a couple of questions that we worked through in our discussion. One focus was on the hunting provisions on the public game lands and the concerns that local citizens would be at risk. And particularly, we wanted to know whether home buyers were going to be notified of the fact that these game lands were there. And evidently, it's noted on the plat, but it's nothing we can necessarily enforce. So we hope they will. I expect that any responsible builder would want to consider that, but it's not something we could put into any sort of zoning condition. We had some discussion about the schools issue. This is one that I expect we're going to see over and over again in Chatham County. The big concern was that students living in these homes are probably going to have to be bused a considerable distance to get to a Chatham County school. Reality is, that is what it is. We don't manage schools here in Cary. Chatham County is going to manage these schools. And so we can consider it, but I don't think it represented, in most of our board members' mind, a reason to not provide the, to approve the zoning request. There was a discussion about cumulative traffic impact when we have a number of smaller rezoning requests that in of themselves don't require traffic impact analysis or mitigation. But when you start piling them up, particularly when we have some rural roads that, that will take some time to get developed, there was a concern about what the aggregate traffic impact was going to be. I think one of our board members conditioned their vote on that concern. The rest of us did not. And I believe that summarizes our discussion.
Very good. Do council members have questions, Ms. Beerman or Mr. Swanstrom? And if not, I would kind of like to know if anyone has concerns about the rezoning before we move on and do the annexation.
I have a quick question. I love the neighborhood that this is adjacent to, the Wecroft Reserve. I absolutely love that neighborhood. How large are the lots in that community?
In Wecroft Reserve, the average lot size is about 17,000 square feet, and the minimum is 14.
Okay. All right. So this is in that same range, 19 down to 12?
Yes.
Is that right? Okay.
Other questions? Mr. Prince?
I'm ready to make a motion whenever.
Okay. We're going to do the annexation first.
Make a motion to approve annexation 13A14.
There's a motion?
Second.
And a second? Discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. You want to continue?
Make a motion to approve rezoning 13-Rez 04.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And I'll make a final motion to approve the comprehensive plan consistency statement.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second? Discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Beerman. We now move to committee reports. This is item G1A, the recycling program options. The committee chose to put this item on the agenda for discussion to get feedback from all the council members. This is Robinson. This is originally your council-initiated request, so we're going to start with you.
Okay. Well, the reason why I brought it forward is because we have a very good diversion rate, but I hear all the time from citizens who say, "I'd recycle more if I had greater capacity to do so." If they either had a recycling bin, sometimes I talk to people, and they say, "My recycling bin isn't big enough." They're not even aware that they could have a bigger recycling bin. We track our diversion, which is phenomenal. I am kind of curious why Asheville has a higher diversion rate than we do when you take out land waste or yard waste. So maybe you can answer that. But we do very well, but I wanted to just see if there were some inexpensive changes to the way we do business that might be able to increase that diversion further and give people the capacity to recycle to the greatest extent possible. So that was the reason why I brought this forward.
Okay. Well, let me share a couple of things. First, the staff report that you have before you, it's important to just kind of sense that common theme throughout, and that's the maturity of our program that we have. And I've referenced that quite a bit in there, that basically, any of these nine suggested programs or implementations that we've suggested, they're not sure of the cost and the benefit that you might realize that is going to exactly equate to the results you're looking for. And that, again, is because of our program is very mature. It's very solid. We have a high participation rate. So to say we're going to upsize all our carts or go every other, every week collection is just a challenge to get there and see the increase in materials. So with that, you know, we did outline nine different items on November 7th. The Ops Committee and council did recommend reducing that dollar second cart monthly fee. I was asked to bring back some backyard composting suggestions and ideas, and also talk about the biannual survey that was brought up a few weeks ago. With that, let me just say this. Susan and her staff, we are in time to put some questions into our biannual survey, and Susan is working that as we speak, and she's identified a few questions and suggestions that can get to our citizens and help determine if there's any barriers or things in the way that they don't understand or get that can kind of give us some foresight into the future on how we can better some of our programs and outreach and so forth like that. So that is happening. And you'll see, I think, shortly in December, a draft of those questions before it gets mailed out. The backyard composting, as opposed to the curbside program that we outlined in this staff report, is doable with some education, some outreach. Probably, and you'll notice again in the staff report, we probably could do it for $2,500. Most of that would be via social media, Facebook-type items, our BUD newsletter, just encouraging our citizens without doing the large mailers that we had referenced earlier in the staff report about some town-wide, large community outreach and education, because those can get kind of expensive. So we could do some smaller outreach with backyard composting in the ways that I said. And also, we had an annual compost bin sale a couple of years ago at the Operations Center, very well-received. But the vendor that we were working with the second year wanted us to commit to buying about 600 of those upfront, which would have been about $30,000. And we sold, I think, 200 at that event, so we'd be having 400 left to sell. And again, you sell them over time and over years, you have to store them, so we just basically didn't do it again. Having said that, we can certainly entertain and look into some other options to have the compost bin sale, get more out in front of our citizens, the events that we're having, and just kind of really start promoting backyard composting. Back to, again, the results you get out of that, it's so hard to say. Does that get you the 49% to 50% or the 27% to 28%? But it's something, you know, if council directs, we can certainly do. It's something our citizens, I think, are encouraged and like to see. It's just, again, what are the results, and how many are we going to put a bin in their backyard and stop compost, start composting? So it's doable, and we can certainly get on that path to explore some things like that as well.
Okay. I think one of the most useful aspects of the information that you collected is the opportunity for us to be able to talk knowledgeably with our citizens about some of the things that they've been asking about. For example, it's frequently that we're asked, "Can't we have recycling picked up every week?" And to be able to say, "Well, we could, but it would cost us $2 million one-time capital investment plus an additional, you know, nearly $600,000 a year," that, you know, at this time, with our tight budget, that's not really probably where we need to be spending our resources. But it helps us to be able to answer. I think that the committee did a nice job selecting some items that we can do, and I would, I would support what the committee selected.
One of the things I'm very happy to hear was the biannual survey. That's almost, I don't want to call it free, because it's not, but it's added to something we're already doing. And so we get free information out of that, which I think would be valuable, the main question being, "Why? Why don't, why don't you do this? Why don't you do that? What don't you know?" You know, that kind of thing.
Yeah, I think that's very.
And I'm very anxious to see what we get back from that.
Sure.
Or if it's just total indifference and we don't get anything.
And it may be possible that some of these other suggestions and things that you've researched on here may turn out to be something we need based on the questions of that survey. So we should keep them on the front or middle burner, not the back burner until we get the survey back. The research you did was just fantastic.
Thank you.
All these possibilities.
Yeah. We spoke at the operations meeting about, well, besides that, we want Ms. Robinson to be able to commit, since this was her pink slip item, was that, and it happened this week, when you drive by on recycling day, as I was driving by this week, I think, you know, six out of 10 recycling bins that I saw were overflowing. And many folks, like Jack, said, "Oh, well, the brown one's full. I just keep putting it in the green one."
Oh, that's a joke. I didn't say.
Let's pull that YouTube video up. So I just.
Well, I was a little bit unable to.
So I think that, you know, offering the opportunity for more information, just, just this week, I got a larger recycling bin. Thank you.
Me, too. Thank you.
I didn't even know that that was.
Don't tell anybody.
I didn't tell anybody. I just think that, you know, there's things that even, that we didn't know that where we wanted more opportunities to recycle, and improving that number will then come, come upon that, that threshold of 50%.
Something interesting this week, McDonald's opened its second green store. That's only, we're the only city in North America that has two green McDonald's. And the interesting thing is, I forget, the other one, the first one who killed our farm that went green, is already considered like a dinosaur in environmental initiatives. Like, this one has substantially more. And one of the things that this store is doing is it has incorporated composting into it. And they've worked with a vendor or partner, but when you think of just getting rid of your trash at a food place, now all of that. your trash at a food place, now all of that, that food debris, you know.
That's great.
So it's a great story when you think it's not just our residential citizens, but the business community is catching on, particularly in the food service industry, and we're kind of looked at as leaders in that.
And I think, just to add to your question earlier, Mr. Robinson, is I think Asheville and I have the same question. I think, if you notice, a lot of their, if not most of their businesses, you walk in the restaurants, they are all composting and have a thing for recycling and compostable waste and stuff like that, so, you know, it's Asheville, and it's, I don't know, it's anything more, but it's a different part of the world that they do, I think, I wouldn't say more than us, but I think maybe their population might be a little more in that arena to compost, recycle, and go a little bit further.
Okay. Let me, oh, go ahead. Go ahead. Let me ask you just a quick question, because I think most of us have experienced in our workplaces that there's not a high rate of recycling going on in our offices, which obviously the town is not engaged, not at Sainsbury's. That's good. Okay, not so, okay. My place could do better. Some of the other places I visit, some of the schools I've seen could do better, but they're all being collected privately, but it's still going to our landfill, correct? It's still going to the one landfill that Wake County all...
The garbage or the recycling?
The, well, the garbage. It should be recycled.
Certainly, all the Wake County garbage, you want it south of Lake Landville and Holly Springs.
Is there any conversation going on trying to engage the businesses and schools to be a little more aggressive?
Well, the businesses, for the longest time with Wake County, had a whole school, I'm sorry, the schools, had a school program, and I think they still have it. It was a Feed the Bin program. I don't know to the extent of their resources and what might have gotten kind of shied away from it. I don't think it was cut. I know they still have it, but I'm not sure how much attention it gets anymore. But a lot of that, sadly enough, comes from there, especially the smaller elementary schools and younger kids are kind of big into that, and the teachers are, and so they're promoting it big in the classrooms, and then the county has, you know, the people collecting it and taking it to the processing facility. So there's a program out there for the schools. I just don't know how strong it is anymore versus what it was a few years ago. And then the businesses, probably not. They have people on staff, Wake County, to assist and do some audits, which we do too, but it's more, if they get a request, they're not going out and being very proactive with it, I should say.
I just wanted to compliment the staff on an ingenious way to achieve the same outcome. The only reason I asked about recycling every week is that people didn't have capacity in their bins. If you can get a second bin and waive the fee, you achieve the same purpose, which is adequate space to store recyclables, and we only lose $8,000 a year. And I realize that's not chicken feed, but it's not 1.7 million to convert carts from 65 to 95, it's not $2 million capital to buy new trucks, and it's not 1.8 million to do the pay-as-you-throw-it. I love that. I think it's an ingenious solution.
But that 8,000 number, that was calculated on who currently has a second cart. If all of a sudden, 30,000 more residents go, "Oh, shoot, I want a second cart too," that 8,000 number is going to grow significantly.
It's still not 1.8 million, but I hear you.
I support the whole option to give folks the second cart, which it sounds like we already do. I just don't support waiving the dollar fee. I think if they're really wanting to participate in this and recycle, then they should also bear some of the cost. I love the education outreach component. I love the idea of putting it in the biennial survey, asking some questions there, getting some more feedback from our citizens, but given budget constraints, to me, that dollar to each citizen a month, if they're that passionate about recycling and want to recycle more, then I think they should cough up the extra dollar. You know, every time the truck stops, and the one-armed bandit thingy goes down and picks up the one can and dumps it, it's gotta do it again, truck's gotta move forward, grab the other can, do it again. If it has to go down, say, everybody on one street now has two bins, that truck's there twice as long, burning twice the gas, twice the fuel, twice the wear and tear on the equipment. I'm just, I'm not ready to waive that fee yet.
And just a little history on that. That fee started really to cover the cost of the cart, and for some...
It's over four years it about pays for the cart.
Actually, it was about eight years, and then some small operating costs to dump that extra cart. Part of that also was the price, the markets, the recycling markets, and what we get for the material. And at one point, just a couple of years ago, the markets were, we were getting about $57 a ton, and that's when staff started discussing that, saying, "You know what? This, we're actually borderline on, you know, is it really even costing us any money now when we're getting $57 a ton?" The markets have tanked again, and we're getting $18 a ton. So now it's actually, again, there's a cost for us to pick these cans up. Not a lot, and that's what that dollar was designed to do, was to be about a break-even for the cost of the cart and the operational cost, but then with the markets coming into play with the price of the material that we're getting back when we sell it, it can fluctuate quite a bit.
Right, and those are near-term budget considerations. I think one thing that we're charged with looking at is the long-term budget considerations. When that landfill that we currently send our waste to fills up, it is going to be freakishly expensive for us to find another site, and then it'll undoubtedly be further out, and it's gonna be very expensive for us to be sending our trash there. So it's in every city's best interest to minimize how much waste we send to our current landfill, so we can have that last as long as possible, and that's what we need to be considering. I would say that for everybody in Cary who has two trash cans, it's time to say, I'm sorry, hand in that second one, you don't need that anymore. I mean, anecdotally, I have a family of six, we put two trash bags in our trash can every week, and our recycling bin is overflowing. And I know other people who have two trash cans, smaller families, and they're filling both trash cans every week. What's wrong here? I mean, they're...
And then there are some of us that had six kids and two adults, and I might need two bins, even though my recycle bin is full. Not everybody's family is just like yours.
I know, but I think it's really, I mean, I've never seen anybody go by, they have two trash bins, and the first one is filled up to capacity. You know, you never see it overflowing, like you see some people's where the lid is up a little bit higher, like Lori was referring to. You don't see that. That, to me, suggests that maybe it's time for us to reconsider offering two trash cans.
And if I could add on the fee, one thing I wanted to get some clarification tonight is, in the original recommendation, was for all of those options, was really for council direct staff to bring them back at the FY15 budget process with which ones you wanted to see. So we could, and that's the clarification I need tonight, I wasn't sure if you wanted the dollar fee to be effective immediately and taken off, or really, as we anticipated, bring that back at the budget process and say, "We're recommending to eliminate the dollar at that time, and then you can see how that fits into your next, into the budget cycle." Again, at the end of the day, it's only $8,000, so...
Well, it's $8,000 today.
Yeah.
I can support looking at it in the next budget cycle, as long as staff comes back with, "Here's projected costs with the dollar, here's projected costs without the dollar."
I think that's the right thing to do, because we, you know, we've talked many times about making decisions that have financial impact in a piecemeal fashion, and again, the potential to be very surprised when we're looking at the budget, and this, you know, even though it's eight, you know, the floor is 8,000, the ceiling may be greater. So I think we're all saying, "What a great idea, but let's make sure we know the real cost." So, and I can support delaying it to roll it into the...
And again, I did, that was the original intent of the staff report, just to bring it forward into the budget cycle.
I appreciate your mindedness of that.
So, anyone want to make a motion to direct staff to...
Well, before we do that, I just want to, you know, one thought, and it kind of piggybacks what you're saying, is we direct staff, you know, to look at options that come back to us. There may be some mechanism, almost like our sunset clause or something, or like we do, where we've had downtown, we have incentives for a period of time, and then the fees kick in. You know, maybe there's something where, as we make people aware, there's, you know, for year one, we're gonna waive that fee, but after that, it is the cost of doing business, and it'll be a different charge. Now, we may just do that by changing our fees every year as we look at things, but, you know, I think you make a good point, Gal. I think we need to take a deep breath and capture the zeal of what we're trying to do and just look at it at the budget.
That's good. And I do like the idea that Scott brought up at the operations meeting. When somebody calls and says, "I want another recycle bin," you may do as you very well did for me. You know we make a bigger recycle bin, right? I mean, there may be people that just need, you know, 30% more.
I've had six in my district in the last couple of months that were talking to me about the every-week recycling, said, "Well, first, let's make sure you have the largest bin. There's another bin."
Exactly.
They called, I mean, Scott was taking care of these like this. So, you know, it's a one-on-one thing.
I like the holistic approach, although I supported the $1, you know, reduction earlier. I think going back to what we all spoke about, where we should look at everything together, makes perfect sense.
And again, we will continue. That's been part of our process or practice from day one. It's just why we've never truly put out there, because again, that option is in there. If, over the year, you got 10,000 larger bins at 50 bucks a can, that's half a million dollars, so, which, we've been doing that from day one, and people request a larger one, we're gonna give it to them, but that's why it was written in here as, yeah, we could kind of flip the switch tomorrow and give everyone a larger one, it would cost 1.7 million, there's just increments of how much that's gonna cost to make that happen.
It seems like we have a consensus to direct staff. Do we want to make a motion to direct staff?
Is it necessary to make a motion? It sounds like we're pretty clear.
I'm sorry?
You don't need a motion, do you?
You don't need, you...
I think they're clear.
I can make a motion. I'll just make a motion and move it along. I make a motion that we include questions regarding recycling on our biannual survey, citizen survey, and we direct staff to include the $1, elimination of the $1 fee for the additional recycling cart.
Second.
This motion is second.
Say that last word.
In the budget, in the next budget.
Look at the financial implications to do it.
Clarification is to consider that in the next...
Just consider that.
Yeah, consider that.
Just to consider it, not...
Consider it.
Not to do it.
Not do it.
Yeah, excuse me, I apologize.
Did you mention the information about composting?
No, I'll include the composting.
So you amend it to include the composting and...
So your motion is three parts.
Three parts.
Biennial survey.
Com, look, yeah, explore composting and consider the implications, yeah.
Everybody clear on that?
Yeah, I'll second.
Three pieces, okay.
Does that include the education outreach stuff?
Part of the, the biennial survey will give us information, I think it's gonna give us information how we need to proceed in it. At least that's the way I view it.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Beck. We now move to old and new business. Item H1, funding for the downtown park, and Ms. Mills will present the site.
You forgot food trucks.
I skipped one.
You're not hungry enough.
Ms. Mills, I'm sorry. We'll get to you in a minute.
Number 15.
We're at item, we're at item G2A. It's a potential regulation for food trucks. Mr. France, the committee chair, will you summarize the committee's recommendation?
Yes, we actually had quite a discussion on mobile food units, otherwise known as food trucks, at our meeting, and we unanimously recommended that mobile food trucks be allowed only on private property, except when they're part of a special event like lazy days or spring days or things like that, where it's a large public event that utilizes, you know, streets, private, public property and kind of stuff. We did not want them just being able to pull over and park on the side of the road, you know, going somewhere, see a lot of people, "Yeah, let's just stop right here and block traffic and sell food." Didn't think that was a good idea, could generate a lot of safety and traffic concerns. We also recommended including a spacing requirement from brick-and-mortar restaurants, but we wanted to get input from citizens, restaurant owners, food truck operators and the like, because we couldn't really come up with what that magic number should be. Should it be 50 feet, 200 feet, 1,000 feet, what? We just, we don't know yet, so we'd like to get that feedback. We also agreed that limits should be placed on how long that food truck would be allowed to stay at one place. Mr. Yurha and Ms. Adcock were not opposed to limiting seating and the use of sandwich boards. However, I didn't really like the idea. To me, it's a food truck, it's not a food restaurant that pops out tables and chairs kind of thing.
Actually, that's not correct. I was opposed to seating and sandwich boards.
Okay.
So I think it was...
Okay, well, this is wrong. All right. We also did not agree that we needed to regulate signage and stuff on the trucks. That would be a staff logistics nightmare. And then we did express some concern about the implications of developing and enforcing these regulations. I mean, it's uncharted territory, we hadn't been down this before, but if anybody can figure it out, staff can figure it out.
Mr. Yurha, since you were dissenting on that one for the seating, you want to talk next?
It was probably a very minor point compared to the whole issue, but as far as the chairs and the sandwich boards, if these food trucks are transitory, and that was the key, I think, to all of us, we wanted the food trucks to, not to be parked anywhere, to be permanent, and there are food trucks in this world that are permanent food trucks, and we don't want that. And if they're transitory, and they're not gonna be in the same place for a long time all the time, I didn't see any particular reason why they couldn't put out a couple chairs or a sandwich board for advertising and put it back again and take it away. I think it's the transitory part that's the key. The same with the appearance. If they're a parked food truck, I am concerned about the appearance. If they're gonna be there all the time, we want them, the appearance matters. But if it's a transitory thing, I don't think the appearance was that important.
Okay, Ms. Adcock?
Mr. France did his usual fun job. Let me just add that what staff asked us to do was give them direction for crafting ordinance language, so none of these were recommendations so much as they were direction. We brought it to you because it was so new, and of course, because we didn't agree on every single point, which is very unusual for us. And so what staff would do next is, depending on what y'all all say, is then go and draft a language that reflects this kind of thing.
And then have the typical public hearings and...
And then we would get, exactly, citizen input, particularly restaurant owners, we think that's gonna be real important. So I just want to, you know, I had somebody ask me after this meeting, actually, it was the local reporter who said, "So, tell me how these ordinances happen to come to you." And I said, "Well, listen, they're not ordinances yet. It was direction for ordinance language," and I think that might be a confusion among the public, so I think it's important to note. But I think Mr. Yurha and Mr. France did a great job of kind of laying out what our kind of little bits of concern were, but we thought staff did a great job. We're looking for a minimalist ordinance that will not require a great deal of time to either administer or to enforce, because this is so new, and it could become one's life work if it was too complicated.
I think y'all did a great job, and I, interestingly enough, agree with all of you. So that probably means I would like to get more information about seating or not seating, pros and cons. Are there examples out there where people have seating with their food trucks and not with their food trucks? What does that mean? Does it mean more people, less people, do people hang out more? I don't know.
Or possibly even allow seating and tables at events, like when there's thousands of people?
And I had a couple of questions.
Or not, you know?
Sorry, I'm sorry. I just had a couple of questions about some of the definitions within the staff report. So for instance, we've received some email from some of the homeowners associations who have a mobile farmer's market truck come to their neighborhood. Would that, they don't cook food, they're spare food, so does that fit into the mobile food unit definition? Have you thought about that? Because they do have, you know, the...
One of the, yeah, one of the initial parts is, as we look at this, was making sure we cover all the possibilities of different ways that food or food products are delivered to people in a transitory or a mobile way, so we'll look at all of those and make sure we cover all of those. I mean, even all the way down to the, get your hot dog at the cart on the way out of the home improvement store, that's another way of...
How about the ice cream truck?
That's a small, or, those are, yeah, ice cream, well, they're listed in here, and they, they were already covered under some of our town code regulations, but they're not mentioned. So we just need to look at all the possibilities, cover them all, and then we've got, hopefully, everything, all the gaps taken care of. And we've had the same request for the garden...
Farmer's market thing.
Farmer's market.
We have one of those that work. It's basically a farmer's market on wheels, and people go inside and get stuff and come out with a thing of eggs or something.
So would an ice cream truck fit into this? Are you going to, are we now suggesting that we permit the ice cream trucks to go?
They already have a requirement to deal with peddling licenses and things. They're already working through the town code on that end. So the regulation or the requirements for that. Clearly, that one is not one that you say can only occur on private property.
Right, exactly.
So those distinctions, the types of users or uses, activities, we need to make sure we look at, you know, all of those various things. And as far as the regulations or requirements, I mean, these things vary from community to community, all over the map. So we'll give you some, maybe some options or ranges in some of these, and then as the actual ordinance language is drafted.
I'm thinking about what you usually do. You bring us ordinance language. Is it option A or option B and that kind of thing to help us narrow it down?
And some parts may need that, and others may not.
And others are more straightforward.
I'm just curious, since I've just been on that committee, are we addressing an existing problem, or are we just presuming that the problem...
I'm not going to say it's not a problem. It's, there's more and more inquiries for food trucks in Cary, food truck operators wanting to come to Cary. So staff has actually brought this, because it's that old. If the town doesn't say you can, therefore you can't. And we have no ordinance language that...
This is empowering some businesses to come in here.
Right now, they're not regulated, which actually, I guess they would technically be in violation.
I see. Okay. All right, that's good, because, you know, I see some food trucks in Cary.
Yeah.
Over construction areas. But, you know, everybody seems happy around the food truck. I mean, I don't see anybody, you know, shaking hands.
It almost has like a cult following. It's wild.
Yeah, so if it's not a bad thing, I don't want to, I don't...
Right. Squash it.
Squash it, yeah.
So we've given you a lot of direction. Has it been clear direction, or do you want a motion, or are you good?
We're good.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
You'll see it in the future as we start crafting the language. And it will be both LDO language and town code language. Some of this may have to be addressed in both parts of our ordinances.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. And now we'll move to old and new business, and I'll once again invite Ms. Mills to present this item.
Good evening, council. At the October 17th work session, you expressed an interest in an initial downtown park scope that required an estimated $5.2 million in funding. And the original plans for the park included an appropriation of $2 million in community investment bonds. Council requested information on potential funding sources for that additional $3.2 million with the larger park scope. Staff recommends the use of general fund, fund balance, if additional, for the additional funding, if council chooses to proceed with the larger scope on the park. Be happy to answer any questions.
I have one.
Questions?
I have one. And what would that leave our fund balance at if we use this 3.2?
I...
I mean, just round figures.
Estimate 17 million above and beyond your four months.
Right.
Your current four-month standard.
I move to approve staff's recommendation.
Second. There's a motion, second.
I have comments. I have grave reservations about doing this. I'm very concerned about appropriating this extra money for a park that's already excessively expensive. I'm very worried about it. You know, when, a long time ago, when we first were discussing about the scope of the park and what we should do with the park, I asked staff for some figures on how much we spent per acre for acquisition of the land. And the figure that was given to me was $187,000 an acre. And I do not know where that number originated from. Unfortunately, I found out it was wrong. We did not spend $187,000 per acre on this land. We spent $900,000 an acre on this land for this opportunity site. So I just am very concerned about us putting a very large park here, using such expensive land for the park, when I think a lot of the people who were voting on that, those acquisitions were doing it for economic development, to create some type of economic generation for our downtown, that I don't think the park is going to be able to achieve. And I think that we need to be very careful before we go and appropriate additional monies to this park, that we understand the full impact of what we're doing and the lost opportunities that we're experiencing with this park. So that's my concern. I feel like I need to articulate it, and I'll be voting against this.
Okay.
Jennifer, what, can I ask, what lost opportunities?
Well, when we originally were talking about this park, and this goes back a long time ago, we talked about having a modded-sized park with office, some community functions such as library, maybe other, you know, business, excuse me, opportunities like that, like a theater. We talked about garden apartments. We talked about retail. And the intent, as we were going and purchasing parcel by parcel, I think got lost over time, because I know some of us were thinking we were doing it with the intent to develop that block in such a way as to enhance pedestrian traffic up and down Academy Street, and to really be a generator for our downtown. And we can go back and look at studies that go back to 2000 that talked about what we needed to do to try to make our downtown a vibrant area. So we started acquiring the land, and as you all know, it was a little piece here. You know, a couple months later, it might be the little piece here. And we weren't keeping a tally before the council of how much we were spending. But again, I think some of us had different ideas of what we were acquiring the property for. But my recollection is that the intent was to develop the land around there, you know, wholly and succinctly. We brought in a group of experts from around the country to come in and talk about what we should do with that opportunity site. And they came up with, I thought, a very good plan. There was only one element of that plan that I thought was bad. But, you know, to have some of the greatest minds in planning come together and give us this great idea for that opportunity site, I thought was fantastic and was worth the money that we invested, because we were going to be able to generate so much property tax off of that parcel, that it would, not soon, but over time, recover that money to the town that we invested in the land. Then, you know, the council diverted and went with a larger park. And at that time, I was nervous about it, just because I was thinking we spent $187,000 an acre to acquire that land, which is far more than we usually spend for parkland. Usually, we spend, if that number is correct, because it got at the same time, but Steph had told me we usually spend about 26 to maybe like up to 34,000 an acre on parkland when we buy it. And so, as you can see, 187 was alarming to me. Since then, I have found out that that number was 900,000. It's just alarming figure to me that we would spend that much money for land that we end up turning into a very large park and would not serve to drive the economic generation that we were anticipating and doing on this site. So for that reason, that's why I just don't want to, I don't want to sink in more money into this park at this time. And I don't, I don't feel comfortable going in and pulling it from our fund balance.
Thank you.
If we don't sink any money into this park, we won't have a park, because right now, it's not a park. It's just a bunch of vacant land. And if you recall acquiring all this land for economic development opportunities, then yes, there was a difference in what our motivations for acquiring this parkland was. For me, and I'm sure others, it was to build a park. I'm not sure on the exact dollar amount per acre total, you know. Initially, when you get the first couple few parcels, they're pretty cheap. And, you know, and as you keep getting more and more, they get more and more expensive. But at the end of the day, I think a lot of us were purchasing this property for a park. And we understood that it was going to cost significantly more than we normally spend for parks, because most of all the other parkland we've ever bought is greenfield. A lot of it's been out, you know, west or with nothing really around it, because it just hadn't been developed yet. So we gobbled it up and land-banked it, got it cheaper. So I don't think we're really comparing apples to apples on this. Acquiring urban space in a developed area, you have to buy the building to get the land. I mean, it's just naturally going to cost more. The experts that I recall that came in and made a recommendation, pretty much recommended it a postage stamp for a park, I mean, two to four acres. That's not what was promised to the community. It's not what was sold to the community. And at the end of the day, after our work sessions and stuff, we've come up with a seven-acre park, which all the documents that I could go back and look at, since the discussion of the park, always referenced six-to-nine-acre park, with seven coming up more often than not. So I think we're honoring the original intent of what, of our commitment was. As far as economic development, I mean, we've already, we've got the Meitong Inn coming. That's a great opportunity. We're looking to cite the library, residential, commercial, and then some of us even compromised with some buildings up to the northeast of it. I think this is an outstanding opportunity to continue the momentum and our focus on downtown. I think this is a fantastic investment that will not only, over time, help spur some economic development opportunities, but provide that amazing amenity to our citizens and the downtown community, and keep good on a promise we made probably over 10 years ago at this point, so...
I think we just have a difference of opinion in whether that promise was made or not. I don't agree with you.
Well, everything I can find in writing says seven-acre park. And I've sent that to council. I've emailed that to council. I've brought it to work sessions. I find nothing else other than the recommendation of experts for anything less. I found images, illustrative concepts. They all show a seven-acre park. The whole site is darn near 14 acres. That leaves half of that site for residential, retail, commercial, economic development, and while still preserving seven acres of it for a park.
Yeah, I...
So we can agree to disagree.
We agree to disagree. And I think there's a reason why it was called the opportunity site, not the park site. And I think that when you look at the timeframe from when we started buying up the land, which predominantly occurred when Ed Goff was there, Ed Goff's vision that was articulated was that it would be an economic development regeneration, that that was what he was saying we were doing, and his justification for buying up the land.
We were acquiring...
It's just a difference of opinion, but because of that, I can't justify spending the extra money out of our fund balance.
The town was actually acquiring this land before I ever got on council, before 2007. So we were buying this parkland long before Ed Goff came along and started calling it an opportunity site. And I remember when he started referring to it as an opportunity site, some of us on council, and especially those in the community, had a really hard time with that, because they recall being promised a park, not an opportunity site. And I tend to agree with those folks.
Yeah, I'll never forget the first time I heard that opportunity site term, and it was over in the Cary Arts Center. We had that very crowded meeting in the back room there, where people were standing in the hall. They had to have two sessions to get everybody in. And it's an opportunity site. And I had never heard that, but I was, I'm sure it was a park. And I mean, I wasn't on council at that time, and I was a regular citizen who paid pretty good attention to things. And it was, it was to be a park. And we were thrilled with the fact that it was going to be a once-in-a-lifetime park. And it is. It's not only once-in-a-lifetime. It's a once-ever opportunity, I think, for a signature park. But then we heard said opportunity site. And at that point, something went in a different direction. And I think everything you're saying, Jennifer, is exactly right. From that point on, that's what was an economic developer, you know, development tool. I mean, I think all that is true. But that's not what it was before. Something switched along the way there, and that's why I guess we're having the problem. You're not wrong. You're right.
Yeah, I see. And I was on the council, and I have recollections of discussions where we talked about what would go alongside the park. And there was even one suggestion, and I don't see him here in the audience anymore, from Mr. Smith, who said, "We could line the east side of it with affordable housing units." And we all said, "Whoa, whoa, 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 whoa. We're not going to be putting affordable housing on Walker Street east of, you know, on the east side of this opportunity." The park was always a component of it, but it wasn't the entire block, and it wasn't such a large portion. It was just a component of it. And I think that it just morphed over time in many different directions. So everybody has different ideas about what it was. But, yeah, as Don said, we just agree to disagree.
Well, I think we're sort of diverging. We did decide on a seven, eight-acre park. We might have understood different facts. But the question before us is, do we want to spend a total of five-point-whatever to, I guess it's have a water feature and all the things we envisioned on that first phase? And that's the question before us. And I know all these things come into play, but I just wanted to bring this...
Wasn't that the discussion? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I think it's healthy that, you know, we have that conversation, but I think that that's the critical point. You know, through all those work sessions and over the last couple of years, you brought that up, and Don and others brought up the other perspective. You know, I personally remember where, you know, some of those original concepts were like 15 acres with a theater downtown, you know. So you can go back and you can put together all kinds of scenarios of discussions in the past. But I think, Mary, you bring up a good point. Through all those work sessions, we vetted, we've had that debate, and we ended up with seven acres. You know, could I have lived with less? A little bit, I think, for, I think there are creative, good downtown parks at four acres. And the other argument was for more acreage. And in the end, as a council, may not have been unanimous, but as a council, we said we're moving forward with seven. And that could still meet our goals of economic development and all the other downtown initiatives that are going on. So, you know, in regards to that, I think unless the council has a, just a whole change of perspective, we've, we've had good, genuine, honest debate on what the size of that park is, and it's over, unless, as a, you know, we want to change our minds on that.
And the question is, do we want to take some of our fund balance at this time and go and develop as much of that park at this time? And so, I mean, it sounds like you guys do. I don't. I'd rather do a modest start and finish off the rest of the park at a later date. But that's fine. If you guys want to, you know, do it, vote for it. I'll vote against it.
I just want to make sure I understand. Did we not talk about this at the last work session, and direct staff to come back?
Right, direct staff to tell us where the money came from, because we were ready to vote on it, and we didn't have the money budget for it. And I said, "Where's this money coming from?"
No, I'm just asking, so is the issue that you have that is coming from general fund balance, or do you just have the issue, you don't want the money at all? That's what I'm trying to understand.
My issue is, we don't really have the money. I personally don't think we should, we don't have the, excuse me. I don't think we have the money in our budget this time to do this large of scope of the park. If we want to reserve the land for the park and do a smaller scope at this time, I think that's fine. I just think that, you know, doing mid-year appropriation out of our fund balance for 3.2 million, which is a pretty significant amount, I just, I'm not comfortable with it. But as I said, if you guys are, let's just vote on it, and we'll vote our conscience.
I would just add that, as I recall from the work session where we asked for staff information where the money would come from, we talked about if we did the $2 million design, and then later went back to do the additional, actually, it was going to cost more money, was going to mean tearing out some of the things we needed to do. And so to do it, to do the first part right, and of course, I realize that's subjective, it was going to take this, and that's why I support the motion.
Okay. Anything else? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries six to one. Thank you, Ms. Mills. We now move to item H2, is the council's appointments to the committee for the future. The council each had the very difficult job of reviewing almost 400 applicants. They come up with seven appointees to fill vacancies that have occurred during this past year. With this many applicants, we have had to have a process. And so each council member individually submitted their top 10 picks in priority order. Two of us had the same number one pick, which left one slot to be filled. There was one person whose name appeared on four of our individual top lists, top 10 list, which is consistent with how we've made past appointments. That's how we developed our slate of appointments, which includes Richard Doman, Kyle Greer, Chuck Smith, Kay Struffalino, Marty Thompson, Dana Widmire, and Keith Ramsey. The clerk's office has contacted these individuals to make sure they agree to serve. In the event the nominee declines the appointment, the clerk seeks council's authorization to allow her to contact the number two person on that council member's list and so forth, until all the slots are filled without additional council approval. Do council members have any questions about this, or is there a motion?
Make the motion to approve the slate?
Second.
There's a motion, second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That concludes the business on the agenda, and I understand we do not have a closed session, so... so I would entertain the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.